I was bleeding yesterday. I don't even know how that happened.
That is weird.
Yeah. Somebody must have bit me.
Yeah.
Hey, they're looking for you. Are you going to do?
And it follows my instructions.
Okay, go in there. We'll wait for you.
Ah.
Yeah, he's getting in.
Okay.
He was.
All right.
I'll just say something.
Hey, Stephanie, just let me know when he's logged in.
See, you're so lucky I'm not a guy nowadays. I want to take this and put it over.
Is he on? Good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council meeting for June 4th, 2024. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the written justice for all.
Well, good evening. We've got a great council meeting prepared for you and looking forward to all the great things we're going to do. There's going to be a reception and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But first, let me acknowledge our Chief of Police, Chief Wong, for the swearing in of five new police officers. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, council members. It's my pleasure to introduce the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department to you and to our community. Mayor Farrell will administer the oath of office this evening. The five officers standing before you are entry-level police officers who recently graduated from the police academy and are currently in our field training program. Their journey to this point has been marked by difficult training, unwavering determination, and a steadfast commitment to excellence. Now, as they step into their roles as law officers of the law, they embody the values of professionalism, empathy, and respect that define our department. As we introduce these officers to our community, we recognize the importance of building trust and fostering positive relationship with our community. These officers are quality individuals and people of integrity. We're fortunate to have them as part of our team and serving our community. First officer is Officer Morgan Thomas. Before joining the City of Federal Way, Morgan worked in the Quality Control for Pepsi Northwest Beverages. At the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, Morgan scored number two in academics, a significant achievement among a group of competitive individuals. Morgan loves spending time with his fiancee and son, who are his biggest supporters. He enjoys being outside, working on cars, and hiking with his dog. Next, we have Officer Trent Wheeler. Trent graduated from Quebec Christian Academy in Arkansas and attended Bible Ministry Institute, where he earned a bachelor's degree in theology. Prior to joining the City of Federal Way, Trent served as elite pastor for several churches across the United States and most recently worked for Virginia Mason Franciscan Health. Trent loves spending time with his wife and four children. He enjoys outside, tending to his beehives, flying planes, staying involved in his church, and hunting and shooting. Next, we have Officer Matthew Zeeman. Prior to joining the City of Federal Way, Matthew worked for the Shoreline Concrete Cutting and as a customer service technician for Rotek Healthcare. He enjoys playing soccer with his wife and watching the English Premier League. He also loves playing outdoors with his two kids and he's an avid outdoorsman who enjoys hiking and camping. Next, we have Officer Joel Tongoi-Lai Longi. Joel earned a Bachelor of Arts in Comparative Religion from the University of Washington. Before joining the City of Federal Way, Joel worked as a trainer for Logic Staffing. He enjoys spending time with his fiancee and their dog. He is currently attending the Master University, seeking to attain his master's degree in Biblical Studies with an emphasis in theology. Next, we have Officer Omar Vivas Cortez. Omar grew up in Reno, Nevada. Omar has honorably discharged from the United States Army after serving four years as a cavalry scout. Omar earned a Bachelor of Arts in Business Administration from the University of Washington. Before joining the City of Federal Way, Omar worked for the Social Security Administration. He enjoys spending time with his family, weightlifting, and playing dodgeball in a dodgeball league. Please join me in welcoming the newest members of the Federal Way Police Department. Officers, if you could come up to the podium for your oath of office.
Officers, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name. Do you solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States?
And the State of Washington?
And the State of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution?
And that I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the State of Washington?
And laws of the State of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment?
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability?
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully?
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially?
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer?
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the City of Federal Way?
In and for the City of Federal Way.
County of King?
County of King.
State of Washington?
State of Washington.
And as such duties as prescribed by law?
And as such duties as prescribed by law.
Congratulations. Should we?
Do you have a live saving camera?
We do. Shall we take a group picture in the office?
Oh, sure. Whatever you like.
Counsel, what do you say? We are up on the dais and we have the officers on the dais. So, officers, if you could sort of line up right there and then the counsel stand up behind you. Okay. If you could direct them, make sure they're centered down. Now, officers, we're going to have a stick around for this next part and then we're going to break for cake afterwards. And you could help with the lifeguards as they try to keep me from the cake when this is all over. They may need assistance. All right. So, let's see here. Congratulations, officers. It's always great to see the families of everybody involved, the beginning of a new career and your career here in the City of Federal Way. It's great to see everybody. Okay, let's see here. Okay, now we've got a very special part of the program that I was made aware of. You know, one of the challenges or one of the things about this job as being mayor is my phone never goes off. If there is a serious crime that occurs, doesn't matter what time of night it is, doesn't matter what time of night or day or holiday, the chief is aware of it, he calls me. Also, when things happen in our community at one of our facilities, whichever director is responsible for that can also give me a call. I believe we had an incident at our community center that could have been, at the community center pool, that could have been a disaster. And one of the things that, and John Hutner, Parks Director, called me immediately after this. Then I got a separate phone call from the chief as well. This occurred over a weekend. I want to let you know that we were so fortunate to have the lifeguards that are there. And it's one thing to train for something. Our officers well know this and we all intrinsically know it, that you train sometimes for, you know, accidents or things to occur. We've got our emergency manager in the back of the room, Kevin Pelley, who is a Lieutenant Colonel in the United States Army, and we prepare all the time for, you know, critical incidents. We are so fortunate that on that, on the day that this occurred in May, we had some very fine young people that had been prepared, that had been trained on how to do CPR. And a little girl, four years old, was in one of our pools and had a crisis and was found in the pool. She had been, you know, taking on water and was, essentially pulled from the pool and life-saving CPR was conducted on this little young girl. And I want to let you know that our folks behaved really remarkably and what's really, and just really in a dedicated cohesive manner, just like their training. But it did, I think, call on us to recognize this and I want to make sure. In fact, actually, we've got our fire chief, Dave Van Vulcanberg, who's here as well. What I'll do is I'll go to the podium. I'm going to say just a few more words. I want the chief to say a few words as well and then we've got some certificates of recognition. So, chief, let's meet at the podium. So, I'll call up the individuals. What I would ask for our young lifeguards, our brave lifeguards who are in attendance with their family, when I call your name, if you could come up and come up to the podium and I'll have the chief hand you your recognition and then we'll have you come up to the center of the room and then the chief will say a few words and then there's cake. But again, no cake for me. All right, so let's go ahead and call it. And actually, before we call, chief, do you want to say a few words before we start calling the names off?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counsel. The mayor was talking about the being trained and being prepared and having that mindset of community service. But when called upon, it still takes that extra gear to jump in and get involved. And so tonight, we're very honored to participate in the recognition of the lifeguards. The initial actions of the lifeguards and the family and the community at the pool really set the stage for a successful outcome and made it very easy for the fire department to come in and render medical aid and have a successful outcome. So, thank you very much for your efforts and we really applaud the fact that you're willing to serve your community in that way. So, thank you.
And I also want to say, we've got a very, in addition to John, we've got Leaf, the head of our community center there, Kevin Hutchinson, who works over at the community center, and our staff that supervises the lifeguard. So, why don't we do this? And Dave, who handles our communications, when I call the name, I'll hand the certificate to the chief. We'll have the individuals come up and we'll take a quick picture with the two of us. After you get your certificate, our lifeguards, if you could stand over there and then we'll do a big group picture. First is Mackay Johnson. And Dave, you want to be, what's the best way? You're the media guy, right here? Okay. Do I need to be on my tippy toes? Right in the center of the room. Emma Kalin. Jackson LaFontaine. Luke Forsman. Daven Hurley. All right, counsel, let's come down, do the group picture with counsel on the floor with our brave lifeguards. And then I know that, chief, you've got some folks here too. You want them to join? Okay, all right. Okay. We're going to have a brief recess for cake. We're going to, right now, it's about 12 minutes till. Let's go right to seven. Enjoy some cake. Let me know how it is. I think we've got some coffees, some punch, whatever. But we'll be in recess for that time. Thank you, everybody.
All right.
You don't want to find out my surprise, you know?
Which region is this?
My special.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, that's too funny. Did you break your teeth?
All right, bye everybody. I mean, for those leaving. We're back on the record. It's not like it's court, sorry. All right, sorry, we're a few minutes over. I got a little carried away with some of my stories. But no cake, I'm happy to report. I know Kealan with the mirrors here, no cake was consumed, Kealan. All right, very good. Okay, thanks for the report. Thank you. Okay. Oh, very good. Okay. And thank you Pam for getting it. Okay, so Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report: Recent Community Events. On the far left, we had the March of Diapers, Babies and Beyond, diaper bank ribbon cutting, May 23rd. That's over there on 352nd. We had the Chamber there, was there with a couple of council members, Cheryl Hurst, who's just a, really just such a giving person in our community. And I don't care what she says, I'm not wearing one of those big diapers, but that's another matter. I hope she's listening. That's not happening. Anyway, they opened up their office space, and she just does so much for the community and gathering up those resources for people who need it, especially the babies. Okay, then we had the Island Bowl, Saturday, May 25th. That's the second picture in from the left. Those are some representatives there. One of them is a rugby legend that is up from California and been originally from, gosh, I think Samoa, I think. But we had, there were teams from California, Oregon, and Washington. There were high school teams, boys and girls, you know, men and women, and also some young kids. And they were over, that was over at Sahali Junior High Park. And I have to tell you, you know, I played, you know, 10 years of organized football, four years at the University of Washington. And I gotta tell you, that was, I don't know if you've seen much rugby in your life, but it was full contact and a lot of fun to watch. So, that was fun. We had King County Executive Dow Constantine, that's in the middle picture there. He and I, he was in my office, and he came last Tuesday, May 28th, had a great conversation. I did want to, they were very diligent about making sure that our visit was very structured in regard to good topics. We talked about the Red Lion Hotel and the efforts that are being made to repair that and get that back operationally. We talked about health through housing. I made sure to express the concerns that have been expressed publicly about the program and about our hopes and expectations, that we don't have a situation there that degenerates, that we have, you know, law-abiding behavior and getting people back in positive, productive lives. And I think the structure there, as he and I spoke, and we've talked about this before, with the gate and with the personnel that are going to be there, I do think it's going to be set up for success and the treatment that will be offered. So, we talked about those things. And also, there had been word that the funding for the King County Public Health Facility over on 13th Place may be in jeopardy, or that the funding for that site, you know, could be down the road in jeopardy. I wanted to make sure that was not the case. This council stood up exactly 10 years ago when they were having budget trouble and ponied up $230,000 to support that. At the time, 10 years ago, 14,000 individuals that were, you know, that had needs were being treated there. That was 10 years ago. And so, King County Public Health at that location is really one of the pivotal, you know, beacons and one of the foundations in our community to make sure that public health is being delivered in our community. And one of the largest. So, that's what, those are some of the topics that the executive and I discussed. It was a good opportunity to have a nice conversation. Then the picture to the right was our own King County Councilmember Pete Von Reichbauer. He has a regular breakfast with South County leaders called the Good Eggs Breakfast, named after a restaurant that he really likes. And, you know, you could see, those are some of the leaders. You had Claudia Kaufman of the King County Council. You had Brian Carter with For Culture, the executive director, the mayors of Des Moines, and the former mayor of Pacific, the current mayor of Algonah, myself, and then the new mayor of Pacific, all in that picture. And Pete really brings everybody together in the community, and it was a great breakfast, and we had a good talk. All right, next. Okay, then I went to the Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly, that was last Thursday, May 30th, down at the Convention Center. If you haven't seen the new Convention Center that's essentially attached, it's right across the street from the Paramount, you need to go walk in there and take a look at this. I've been all over the world, and I've never seen a Convention Center this large. And cavernous, and one room after the other, one floor after another. Many of the region's leaders were there. You could see my friend, the mayor of Seattle, Mayor Harrell, former Husky football great, there greeting the crowd. And he's always good for a good chuckle as well, and we had, he had a good meeting and a good welcome. And they had some awards. The Congressman Larson from the 2nd District was there. He received an award for his 24 years of service, 12 terms in Congress. And the chair, the mayor of Poolsbo, Becky Erickson, I believe, was re-elected as the chair of the Puget Sound Regional Council. They do a lot of infrastructure funding and great discussions throughout the community. Let's see. Okay, then we had the, we had the pride flag raising on Friday, May 31st, 9:00 AM, City Hall. And Allison Fine, my friend, we missed you that day, Allison. Next year we'll have you do it. I was gonna have Allison raise the flag. Allison was such a great leader and such an inspiration to me about raising the flag. And we had a great ceremony. Thank you, council president, and the members of the, and councilmember Honda, and the other councilmembers that were there. We raised the flag, had a great ceremony. Next year, is Kevin still here? Next year, we've got some ideas how to make the event better. I've got Kevin working on flags, miniature flags, and I've got some ideas on how to make the event better. But Allison, we need to start planning for next year, so I need your help on that. Then we've got the sister city, Hachinawa, Japan School Visit. And I'm gonna let you know, I got a really, really sweet letter from the mayor of Hachinawa, Japan, in anticipation of, it came like the day before they got here. But see those great kids there? Pam, how old were they again?
13.
Yeah, they were great. And they do this, this thing with their, you know, it looks like a little heart. And they were all doing that, that pose for the picture. And they asked some great questions. And I thought I knew a little bit of Japanese, that I ran by them, that they told me this thing I've been saying for all these years since high school was wrong. Whatever. So, anyway, we had a good, we had a nice visit, and it was fun. And, let's see here. Oh, and we wrote the mayor of Hachinawa back, and he was so gracious when we were there last year, especially when I got sick. And, okay, you guys, so I was in this hospital room, all by myself for a week after I got COVID. And toward the end, about the last three or four days, the mayor of Hachinawa, every day sent over coffee and some goodies for me as I was sitting in this hotel room by myself, trying to get better. So, it was, it was very nice. And then the day I got out, and the day they sprung me, they drove me all over, all over Hachinawa before they threw me in a train and told me to get out of town. So, it was fun. He's a great, great leadership there, very nice people. The kids were great. Friday night, we had the annual arts festival, the Arts Explosion at the Performing Arts and Events Center. John, your team over there just did a phenomenal job. Thank you so much. The Arts Commission did a phenomenal job, and really appreciate it. And I have to tell you, the level of art, the presentations that were there, the miniature walls that were set up for, that's not lost on me. I know how much work went into that for the exhibits. And there were three different types of forums or of art displayed. There was the three-dimensional sculpture-type art. There were the paintings, and then there was photography. And so, I was able to announce the winners for those, and the award winners. And that was fun. And it was, it was great. It was a great event. So, and I was really impressed with how many people were there. And it went all weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, great on the Arts Commission for all they've done and what they did. This was really a shining moment. And I think we're gonna have the Arts Commission come to an upcoming city council meeting, talk about just the overwhelming success. We'll let them talk about that. Okay, next. Okay, on Saturday, the next day, the South King Tool Drive-Thru Appliance Electronics Recycling and Paper. And those are the team there at the South King Tool Drive-Thru. It was, it was a great event. If you haven't been over there, it's over there right next to the Masonic Hall. And it's great. I'm gonna, I'm gonna eventually check something out of that library, maybe a weed eater. But anyway, it was great talking with them and seeing the folks doing the recycling and all that. Then we went over to the Federalway Farmers Market. There is Rose and also Bill's daughter, Ms. Vidino, the commissioner. And then, that night, the Federalway Youth Symphony Orchestra on June 1st, and some winners there, and some, just a phenomenal event. Hundreds of people in the community. Boy, you couldn't get a parking spot in the park, in the packed parking lot, you had to go across the parking lot. So, that was great. All right, next. Okay, these are the upcoming. We've got the Starry-Sary Night, March of Diapers Benefit, 6:00 PM, June 8th. We've got the Harborstone Credit Union Ribbon Cutting on noon on June 13th. We've got South King Fire 75th Anniversary Open House, 10:00 AM to 2:00 on June 15th. And then, and then actually, right before that, councilmember Honda, you wanna talk about what we're doing right before that?
Right before the South King Fire Anniversary Open House, the Seroptimus Club at Federalway will be hosting our annual Flag Day event at the King County Aquatics Warehouse Center. And it starts at 9:30 and should be over about 10:30. We have the Federalway Corral performing. We have a speaker talking, a Gold Star Mom speaker talking about her experiences and what she's been through, and what she's doing now in the community for other Gold Star Moms. And a woman veteran whose mother was in the Seroptimus Club when we started the flags along Campus Drive. We'll have some poems, some music. We'll have hot dogs there as usual, thanks to the Lions Club, and it'll be a great event. We hope you come. And it's free. Thank you.
Yeah, I remember when I first got involved in this community, it was 31 years ago. And Pete Von Reichbauer was doing something on Flag Day, and me and Tom Pearson, who worked in his office, John, you won't even believe this, they had us up on regular, regular ladders that they held, and one person held the ladder against the pole, and the other person climbed up and changed the flags. That is pretty, EJ's giving me the look like, that's literally crazy. And Pete was like, what's taking so long? But that's how we did it back in the old days. Anyway, now that's, now you need a truck to close traffic and get it up. So, anyway, that'll be fun. Are we, are we changing out the flags on the row there, or is it, this is the off-year?
We are, and, no, this is the, this is, we're doing it every year now, and I think it is scheduled for next week. Definitely before Flag Day, they will all be.
And I'm busy those days. I'm not, I'm not available to do that.
We got a special ladder for you.
All right. So, then we've got Juneteenth Flag Raising on Tuesday, June 18th. The next day, the 19th, is the actual Flag Day ceremony or holiday. And we're gonna have a great event here at noon, City Hall. David, you wanna tell them just a little bit about what we're doing on Juneteenth?
Yeah, thanks Mayor. So, let's see, your June, on Juneteenth, so again, as you mentioned at noon, here at City Hall, we're gonna have a proclamation, of course. We're also gonna have one of our community partners, the Seattle Medium, which is one of the oldest, actually, it is the oldest African-American newspaper in the state. One of its representatives will be there to talk about just kind of what that moment means for them. So, come on out and support a very historical day.
Okay, very good. Well, lots going on. It's gonna be a great event. And remember, we're doing the
So King County Public Health at that location is really one of the pivotal, you know, beacons and one of the foundations in our community to make sure that public health is being delivered in our community. And one of the largest. So that's what, those are some of the topics that the executive and I discussed. It was a good opportunity to have a nice conversation. Then the picture to the right was our own King County Councilmember Pete Von Reichbauer. He has a regular breakfast with South County leaders called the Good Eggs Breakfast, named after a restaurant that he really likes. And, you know, you could see, those are some of the leaders. You had Claudia Kaufman of the King County Council. You had Brian Carter with For Culture, the executive director, the mayors of Des Moines, and the former mayor of Pacific, the current mayor of Algonah, myself, and then the new mayor of Pacific, all in that picture. Pete really brings everybody together in the community, and it was a great breakfast, and we had a good talk. All right, next. Okay, then I went to the Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly. That was last Thursday, May 30th, down at the Convention Center. If you haven't seen the new Convention Center that's essentially attached, it's right across the street from the Paramount, you need to go walk in there and take a look at this. I've been all over the world, and I've never seen a Convention Center this large. And cavernous, and one room after the other, one floor after another. Many of the region's leaders were there. You could see my friend, the mayor of Seattle, Mayor Harrell, former Husky football great, there greeting the crowd. And he's always good for a good chuckle as well, and we had, he had a good meeting and a good welcome. And they had some awards. The Congressman Larson from the 2nd District was there. He received an award for his 24 years of service, 12 terms in Congress. And the chair, the mayor of Poolsbo, Becky Erickson, I believe, was re-elected as the chair of the Puget Sound Regional Council. They do a lot of infrastructure funding and great discussions throughout the community. Let's see. Okay, then we had the, we had the pride flag raising on Friday, May 31st, 9:00 AM, City Hall. And Allison Fine, my friend, we missed you that day, Allison. Next year, we'll have you do it. I was gonna have Allison raise the flag. Allison was such a great leader and such an inspiration to me about raising the flag. And we had a great ceremony. Thank you, Council President, and the members of the, and Councilmember Honda, and the other council members that were there. We raised the flag, had a great ceremony. Next year, is Kevin still here? Next year, we've got some ideas how to make the event better. I've got Kevin working on flags, miniature flags, and I've got some ideas on how to make the event better. But Allison, we need to start planning for next year, so I need your help on that. Then we've got the Sister City Hachinawa, Japan School Visit. And I'm gonna let you know, I got a really, really sweet letter from the mayor of Hachinawa, Japan, in anticipation of, it came like the day before they got here. But see those great kids there? The, Pam, how old were they again?
13.
Yeah, they were great. And they do this, this thing with their, you know, it looks like a little heart, and they, they were all doing that, that pose for the picture. And they asked some great questions, and I thought I knew a little bit of Japanese that I ran by them, that they told me this, this thing I've been saying for all these years since high school was wrong. Whatever. So, anyway, we had a good, we had a nice visit, and it was fun. And, let's see here. Oh, and we wrote the mayor of Hachinawa back, and he was so gracious when we were there last year, especially when I got sick. Okay, you guys, so I was in this hospital room, all by myself, for a week after I got COVID. And toward the end, about the last three or four days, the mayor of Hachinawa, every day, sent over coffee and, and some goodies for me, as I was sitting in this hotel room by myself, trying to get better. So it was, it was very nice. And then the day I got out, and the day they sprung me, they drove me all over, all over Hachinawa before they threw me in a train and told me to get out of town. So it was, it was fun. He's a great, great leadership there, very nice people, the kids were great. Friday night, we had the annual arts festival, the Arts Explosion at the Performing Arts and Events Center. John, your team over there just did a phenomenal job. Thank you so much. The Arts Commission did a phenomenal job, and really appreciate it. And I have to tell you, the level of art, the presentations that were there, the miniature walls that were set up for, that's not lost on me. I know how much work went into that for the exhibits. And there were three different types of forums or of art displayed. There was the three-dimensional sculpture-type art, there were the paintings, and then there was photography. And so I was able to announce the winners for those, and the award winners. And that was fun, and it was, it was great. It was a great event. So, and I was really impressed with how many people were there, and it went all weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, great on the Arts Commission for all they've done and, and what they did. This was really a shining moment. And I think we're gonna have the Arts Commission come to an upcoming city council meeting, talk about, just the overwhelming success. We'll let them talk about that. Okay, next. Okay, on Saturday, the next day, the South King Tool Drive-Thru Appliance Electronics Recycling and Paper. And those are the, the team there at the South King Tool Drive-Thru. It was, it was a great event. If you haven't been over there, it's over there right next to the Masonic Hall, and it's great. I'm gonna, I'm gonna eventually check something out of that library, maybe a weed eater. But anyway, it was great talking with them and seeing the folks doing the recycling and all that. Then we went over to the Federway Farmers Market. There is Rose and also Bill's daughter, Ms. Vidino, the commissioner. And then, that night, the Federway Youth Symphony Orchestra on June 1st, and some winners there, and some, just a phenomenal event, hundreds of people in the community. Boy, you couldn't get a parking spot in the park, in the packed parking lot, you had to go across the parking lot. So that was great. All right, next. Okay, these are the upcoming. We've got the Starry-Swelling Night March of Diapers Benefit, 6:00 PM, June 8th. We've got the Harborstone Credit Union Ribbon Cutting on noon on June 13th. We've got South King Fire 75th Anniversary Open House, 10:00 AM to 2:00 on June 15th. And then, and then actually, right before that, Councilmember Honda, you wanna talk about what we're doing right before that?
Right before the South King Fire Anniversary Open House, the Seroptimus Club at Federway will be hosting our annual Flag Day event at the King County Aquatics Warehouse Center. And it starts at 9:30 and should be over about 10:30. We have the Federway Corral performing. We have a speaker talking, a Gold Star Moms speaker, talking about her experiences and what she's been through, and what she's doing now in the community for other Gold Star Moms. And a woman veteran whose mother was in the Seroptimus Club when we started the flags along Campus Drive. We'll have some poems, some music. We'll have hot dogs there as usual, thanks to the Lions Club, and it'll be a great event. We hope you come, and it's free. Thank you.
Yeah, I remember when I first got involved in this community, it was 31 years ago, and Pete Von Reichbauer was doing something on Flag Day, and me and Tom Pearson, who worked in his office, John, you won't even believe this, they had us up on regular, regular ladders that they held, and one person held the ladder against the pole, and the other person climbed up and changed the flags. That is pretty, EJ's giving me the look like, that's literally crazy. And Pete was like, what's taking so long? But that's how we did it back in the old days. Anyway, now that's, now you need a truck to close traffic and get it up. So, anyway, that'll be fun. Are we, are we changing out the flags on the, on the row there, or is it, this is the off-year?
We are, and no, this is the, this is, we're doing it every year now, and I think it is scheduled for next week. Definitely before Flag Day, they will all be.
And I'm busy those days, I'm not, I'm not available to do that.
We got a special ladder for you.
All right. So then we've got Juneteenth Flag Raising on Tuesday, June 18th. The next day, the 19th, is the actual Flag Day ceremony, or holiday, and we're gonna have a great event here at noon, City Hall. David, you wanna tell them just a little bit about what we're doing on Juneteenth?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So let's see, June, on Juneteenth, so again, as you mentioned, at noon, here at City Hall, we're gonna have a proclamation, of course. We're also gonna have one of our community partners, the Seattle Medium, which is one of the oldest, actually, it is the oldest African-American newspaper in the state. One of its representatives will be there to talk about just kind of what that moment means for them. So come on out and, and support a very historical day.
Okay, very good. Well, lots going on, it's gonna be a great event, and remember, we're doing the, we're doing the celebration of the flag raising the day before Juneteenth, because it's a holiday the next day. So, anyway, Tuesday, June 18th. Okay, now, the most important part of the meeting, public comment. And everybody knows that you've got three minutes, except our first speakers, which we need to give five minutes, because they represent the library services, if you've got five minutes to, and green means go, yellow means stop, excuse me, yellow means you've got 30 seconds, red means please stop, and please do, I hate to interrupt people, and just let us know what community you're from. With that, we've got Felicia Wilson and Stacy O'Shea with, both with library services.
Good evening. I would like to thank Mayor Farrell and the city council members for giving us the opportunity to speak. My name is Felicia Wilson. I'm the regional library manager for Soundview Region, which includes both Federway Libraries. I'm really proud to be here with my library and information services manager, Stacy O'Shea, to talk about some of the programs and services that are being offered through our local libraries. And one of the things I'm most proud about is, I feel like the Federway community and the libraries really live up to the library's vision statement, which is a world where knowledge allows diverse communities to prosper and grow. And so, we are basically, the programs and services we offer are trying to meet the needs of the community, but we also wanna be a place where community can gather and, you know, reach out and talk to each other. So I'm gonna stop and let Stacy tell you about, more details about the programming that we're having. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Sure, I hope I know this. I am Stacy O'Shea, librarian and information services manager at the Federway Libraries. And that means my job is to support librarians as they connect with our communities and provide programs and services to our patrons, and thank you for this opportunity. So I'd first like to point out, a lot of you have received the handout about our, where's my handout? Anyway, handout about our libraries and our communities. And I wanted to point out some of the statistics we have on the back, which is the fact that in just May, January through May of this year, we had over 22,000 patrons borrowing items. Together, they checked out over 187,000 print items. We had over 21,000 computer sessions. So our libraries are very clearly active and vibrant buildings. On the front of this paper, we also have some information about all the things that have been supported by the Friends of the Library. Friends of our, Friends of the Federway Libraries have been supporting the libraries for many years, they run our book sales, and their amazing efforts pay for many programs, provide snacks for our events, and help support large, system-wide performances, such as a Seattle Opera recital that we had last year, or earlier this year, I should say. I also wanna thank Judge Larson and the Federway Municipal Court. Twice a month since last fall, we have been hosting a community court in one of our meeting rooms. It's held in conjunction with a resource center. We've worked with over 25 organizations up to now. We have often received new requests to join that, and what we have is community organizations offering support and services to our patrons, and also supporting the folks working their way through the community court system. This year, KCS is also celebrating intellectual freedom with our 2024 Freedom to Read Campaign. Rather than focusing on negative topics such as censorship, we're instead making sure that every patron can see themselves represented in the library. Not every book or program is for every person, but every person should find something that speaks to them in our buildings. And finally, don't forget Summer Reading, it's right around the corner. It starts June 15th, runs through August 31st. Please check out our online calendar for all the amazing events we have planned this summer. We, of course, have lots of programs for kids and teens. We also have graded events for adults, such as Summer Reading in the parks. And we have partnered with Federway City Parks and Recreation Department, and the first event is actually this Thursday at Adelaide Park from 2:00 to 4:00. So bring your book, come ready to read, enjoy snacks, and discuss books with your neighbors. So don't forget us, don't forget to check out ksls.org, and please come visit the Federway Libraries. Thank you.
All right, thank you both, great job. Thank you for the work you do. Okay, now, oh, I did need to let it renew, and I should've said this much earlier. Councilmember Jack Doby is participating via remotely, via Zoom, so can you hear us? And I actually, Councilmember Doby, I think I heard you during the Pledge of Allegiance. You still there?
I am still here, yes.
All right, all right, all right. Wanted to acknowledge your presence, so thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got Anna Patrick next, and then after that, we've got Ken Blevins, Allison Fine, Janice Clark, and Betty Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and Councilmembers. My name is Anna Patrick, and I am speaking as a resident for Federway. I am here to express my concerns about the housing in Federway. When we moved to Federway in the 90s, from Seattle, we called it the Federway Getaway. After leaving dilapidated apartments for a new home, we found a natural mix of demographics that made it feel like the right place to live. Over time, housing projects have brought in displaced families from out of state and gentrifying areas, often resulting in residents who seemed unhappy to be here. With this came a smaller tax base. Additionally, we've seen an influx of homeless individuals who are often active hardcore drug users, whose presence has been accompanied by increased crime and predatory behavior. Gentrification in Seattle and Eastside communities has pushed people south, further straining our resources. Housing voucher distribution tends to concentrate in areas experiencing demographic shifts. I polled some data recently that demonstrates this. I'm curious about the overlap of housing vouchers with tax-exempt low-income housing, and how this reflects on the true income brackets housed in our city. East King County, and I have that data, I can send it to you if you'd like. I've got two different years comparing the two, all the King County cities that I was comparing. East King County suburban cities are becoming less inclusive, primarily based on income brackets. Every community should accommodate all income levels to ensure a balanced and integrated society. Federway is missing the middle-to-upper income brackets. You can see that on the Washington State Commerce data that's been presented to us. People with spending power and a tax base that can support services for low-income brackets is what we need. If we continue prioritizing displaced demographics, we will never fill this gap. The need for inclusive housing solutions on the east side of the county is evident, with long housing voucher waitlists that I saw in that data that I polled. For these communities, and you can blame, you can't blame people for wanting to move somewhere safer with a better tax base that supports schools, fire, and police. Regarding our intentions for our city, we need to plan and incentivize building housing for every income level, and allow people to integrate naturally. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Ken Blevins.
Counsel and Mayor, thanks for hearing me. I'm Ken Blevins. I've been a citizen of Federway for 52 years. And what I wanted to talk about today is, I've been driving around a bit, and there's, on some weeks, they have maybe dozens of homeless drug addicts dropped off in our town, and our SOU unit is doing an excellent job of tackling that. I think we talked about doing that without citizens, pointing it out, and so on, but I think there's a better job of that, for sure, and I think there's more emphasis. And, and when someone does notice something, it gets taken care of really quickly. So hopefully, in the near future, we'll, they'll be able to do some more police work because of some laws that are either overturned or whatever. If they see a group of guys on the side of the road doing drugs right out in front of everybody and their children, maybe we can take care of that. Because the problem is, is they just huddle there, and then they leave their garbage when they're shooed away. And then I saw a city of Federway worker cleaning up garbage, and you know where that came from. So a lot of it's from that, some, sometimes teenagers throw their, you know, McDonald's stuff outside, and that's rude, but they'll grow up and own something and not do that. So, but anyway, so I just wanna mention that the police department's doing a really good job, and I'm glad that we have new guys coming in and so on. Another thing that I wanted to mention is the issue, well, first with the flag raising, I think if you're gonna, to not just raise a flag, but also then sponsor it and talk about it, like, you know, and so on, maybe we could do something that's more inclusive, and, you know, events around the Federway, some organizations that invite everybody there, like the Festival of Desna Cup. I remember years ago, there were flags that were put up there, and I haven't seen them in the last however many years. It would be really cool, it's a Slavic festival, and they have sports like volleyball, professional volleyball, and soccer. So it's a really cool event, there's a lot, there's music, there's really good, you know, homemade-type food and so on, so it'd be nice if maybe the city of Federway can do something like that. We don't have a parade, so, and I know we have that fourth celebration, but stuff like that, we can encourage, you know, organizations to be able to bring unity in the community instead of just focusing on a certain amount of people. And again, what Jeff was talking about last, last meeting was, the American flag and the Washington, Washington flag, citizens of the United States, people that we can actually together celebrate something that we all have in common. So I think more commonality is a really important thing to bring people together, they're not as much diversity. Diversity is welcome, because everybody is who they are, but commonality is something we should push. Thanks.
Thanks, Ken. Allison Fine.
I can't believe I'm gonna say this, but I appreciate what Ken just said. I can absolutely be appreciative. Diversity comes in many forms. It doesn't come just in gender, or race, or religion. It also comes in interests and activities. So I think anything that brings, especially anything that brings people here to our city to spend money, or allows our community to celebrate together, I'm all for it. I'm not new to the city of Federway, it's been my home for over 10 years, but I have been an activist for over 25. At 19, I marched with Angela Davis in San Francisco, and in that moment, I realized the power of my voice to speak for marginalized communities. I brought that voice here with me when I moved, when I moved here. And for a few years, as you guys know, I spent a lot of time as a political leader. When I realized that that's really wasn't where I wanted to be, and it wasn't where my heart was, I stepped back from that work, and I went to work for the city, for the entire city, on the Diversity Commission. And my voice is bold, and I know that. My voice is also committed. In 2019, my experience at the Flavor of Federway was inspiring the diversity in vendors, food, entertainment. It was a true community event. As a Diversity Commissioner, it's a huge goal for me to bring that event back, which is why I have worked incredibly hard as a commissioner, using my personal connections in the community, to ensure that the Federway Community Festival is the shiny diamond of an event in this community. I wanna be clear, I'm the sole commissioner that was working on this event. My space as the only queer person on the commission is valuable, and I have not given up on the city council and their commitment to maintaining diversity on that commission. I have personally met with Pacific Islander leaders and Latino leaders to recruit for the commission, because, as Councilmember McDaniel pointed out, it is not that diverse of a commission. But I also know it's important to have the queer voice. There are still four spots open. Now, I realize that when I speak, it's from a place of passion, and that's okay. We speak differently, and that's the voice that I, that I use. But sometimes I think I misunderstood, and I want you to understand that my passion for this city is not just about queer spaces, it's not just about black spaces, it's about, it's about spaces for everyone in this community to exist, feel safe, and enjoy each other. Tonight, a motion could be made from the floor to allow me to rejoin the commission and complete my work on this festival, because I don't know, without me, if it will get done. Thank you for hearing me. I also wanna say personally, again, to Councilmember McDaniel and Walsh, thank you for coming to Diversity Commission meetings. Thank you, Councilmember Walsh, for the support that you've had for the festival so far, and I look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison. And thank you for the courage to come right back, appreciate it, and for your kind words. Janice Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Janice Manitris Clark, a Black Cherokee, 100% service-connected, disabled veteran, who despite of libelous newspaper articles and slanderous conversations, I am not a felon. I've never been a felon, and I'm not trying to be one. And I don't use illegal drugs. I was retaliated against because I blew the whistle of being raped in the military. I've served over 30-plus years. I filed a Title VI and a Title VII civil rights complaint against the Washington Army National Guard, and it has been the bane of my existence. Mayor, you mentioned the executive of King County, and so I rise to remind us here that 800 applicants applied for the racism, to dismantle racism in Martin Luther King County. Of 800, there was 123 of us that won the award. Two of us here, right in the great city of Federway, and the Island Bowl, that the Warriors, the Federway Warriors, they are recipient, and Janice Clark is a recipient of Company of Contractors. We are just wrapping up now, going to the Washington State Women's Conference this weekend coming up. And countless times, and I will continue to keep coming back, because as a Black Native woman here, been here about seven years, I had to not flee from Pierce County, but I couldn't get services there in Pierce County. So I came to Federway, my daughter, my granddaughter, and my granddog, and we are, I, I have a Veterans Bash voucher. And it is amazing to me that as I'm trying to reconnect with this great city, and now it's almost summer, so I'm requesting again, not only just keep talking about it, but we need to join hands together. My time is about 28 minutes, seconds. Well, I'm gonna yield the balance of my time, but I want to lift up that June is also PTSD Awareness Month, and so I appreciate the time to come before you, and I look forward with joining the hands again with the city to do great work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, Betty Taylor.
Good evening, my name is Betty Taylor. Finally, I get to read this, just the three weeks. Okay, here we go. All right. Dear Honorable Mayor, Mayor and esteemed members of the city council, I come to you today with a heavy heart, but a steadfast resolve on behalf of the tenants of Traditions at Federway. We are a community in dire need of your intervention and support due to a concerning pattern of security breaches that have left many of us vulnerable and financially devastated. As residents of this community, we have faced repeated break-ins that have resulted in significant losses, particularly impacting those of us who are low-income and can ill afford to replace stolen belongings. Some items tragically are irreplaceable, adding emotional distress to our financial burdens. The current storage facilities provided to us are woefully inadequate in terms of security. The cages behind a locked door, though they may be, offer little protection as they allow anyone entering the room to see the contents of each unit easily. I have fallen victim to this lack of security, losing two laptops and experiencing the distressing sight of my belongings thrown across the floor. Such violations of privacy and property are unacceptable. It is particularly distressing to know that government funds, at least in part, contributed to establishing this property. As tenants, albeit not affluent, we deserve better treatment and greater protection of our rights and possessions. I implore you to urge the owners of Traditions and Federway, the in-lane group based in Spokane, Washington, to take immediate and decisive action to rectify this situation. Specifically, we urge the implementation of enhanced security measures, including improved storage security. The current storage units must be upgraded to ensure that the contents are not visible to anyone entering the storage area. This may entail installing opaque barriers or individual enclosures for each unit. Surveillance. surveillance cameras, installation of surveillance cameras in key areas to monitor access to the storage facilities. This will not only deter potential thieves, but also aid in identifying perpetrators should any further incident occur. By implementing these measures, the owners can send a clear message to would-be thieves that our community is not an easy target. Moreover, it will provide much-needed peace of mind to tenants who have already suffered losses and are living in fear of further violation. In closing, I appeal to your sense of justice and duty to protect the welfare of all community members regardless of their socioeconomic status. We rely on your leadership and influence to advocate for us and make sure that the owners of Traditions at Federal Way fulfill their obligations to provide a safe and secure living environment for all tenants. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter. We eagerly await your action and support.
Thank you, Betty. Thank you. And Chief, can you please have our SOU unit reach out to, I know that you and I went there a few months ago and spoke with, it's Traditions, is that the name of it?
Yes.
Yes. Would you maybe have our, ask our SOU folks to just touch base with them about some of these issues?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Betty. We'll make sure we reach out to them, let them know your concerns. And Pam, I know you're, I see you, Pam works in my office. You've got a copy of that letter. I don't know, Chief, if you have a copy of that, but could we make sure that we send that to the chief and we send that to SOU, just to make sure that it get, we get this circulated? Okay, that-
... has already left already, so now they're in the process of getting new management.
Okay.
We're down to manage.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that update. Well, we'll be, we'll work with them and make sure that we're in partnership with them. Okay. And I, the chief and I certainly appreciate the time to come speak with your tenants, with your neighbors. Okay, I don't have any more pink sheets. Do we have anybody online? Okay, are there any other pink sheets? Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Clark.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. And do we have, is Saudi Abdullah here? You know, I think our wires may have been crossed. I think that, I'm not sure, Ms. Abdullah, Chair Abdullah, the Diversity Commission, knew that she was going to be here, or I don't know if we, I think our wires may have been crossed because of the event. But we do have Allison Fine. Allison, would you be amenable to accepting the Diversity Commission, the Pride Month proclamation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so I will go ahead and read the proclamation, and Allison was on the Diversity Commission for years and years and is a large part of the reason why we raise the pride flag every year. Okay, so this year, the proclamation, we had a great event, like I said, and the proclamation reads, "Pride Month. Whereas the City of Federal Way cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas we are all are welcome in the City of Federal Way to live, work, and play where every family deserves a place to call home, where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors, and whereas we denounce prejudice and discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles, and whereas it is imperative that all people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel safe, feel valued, safe, and supported by peers and community leaders, and whereas we appreciate the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus, LGBTQ plus community, and therefore I, the undersigned Mayor of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim June 24th as Pride Month in the City of Federal Way, signed this 31st day of May, 2024." And I've got this for it.
Thanks, Ben.
Let's do a picture. Can you hold up? Is there a-
Yeah.
Okay, everybody, one, two, three. Take them over this way, and one, two, three, and he'll turn.
So first of all, I apologize again that I wasn't there on Friday. I had COVID, and so I thought it was best to probably stay home. And so I appreciate that you once again raised the flag. Secondly, if I knew that this was happening, I probably would have not worn flip-flops today, and maybe, I don't know, done my hair, but I know McDaniel's all in with flip-flops.
Exactly.
I get it. Okay, so look at that, just bonding right now in our Crocs. You know, I have always been grateful for the commitment that the mayor and council have made to diversity in this commission and not, I don't even want to just, I mean, in the city, and I don't want to just say diversity in terms of, like I said, queer people. You know, I know that we raised the Irish flag, and I know that when Ukraine needed support, we raised the Ukrainian flag, and I think that these are true commitments to saying, these are people in our community that matter, and here's a small offering, right? So I appreciate that you guys raised it again. I will just always be mindful, I know last meeting in my passion, one of the things that I spoke about was some discussion around raising flags and how I take that personally because there are children that are affected by words like that. There are young queer people that are most at risk for suicide because they don't feel safe in their communities and sometimes in their homes. So I love that Federal Way, although we are not always on the same page about things, I appreciate the steadfast commitment to saying that Pride Month matters and that, you know, that Juneteenth matters and that communities here are represented. I also would encourage anybody that sees this of other communities who have important events or important holidays to come to the mayor, to come to the council and say, can we recognize this? And let them, let that be taken into consideration. As a queer person in this country, it can be difficult right now. I mean, it feels like sometimes things are moving backwards, but I have to say that I, in Federal Way, I know it brings a lot of joy to a lot of people to see the flag we raised, to know that there's somewhat of a commitment, and not just here at City Hall, but also on 320th, I saw that you maintained that commitment as well. And so I can only say thank you. I wish I had better remarks and, okay, the flip-flops are all right, but I wish I had better remarks for you, but I also hope that when we have opportunities to learn, that we do. I know that there were some heated moments this year with comments made about, you know, about different members of our community, and that's okay, because we don't always come out knowing what to say. But I think we can all, myself included, know when it's time to learn. And so I appreciate our commitment to this, to Pride Month. I encourage other communities to reach out to the council and the mayor for representation for things that are important to them as well, and I would encourage the council and the mayor to consider those as moving forward. Thank you again. The community appreciates it.
Thank you, Allison. Appreciate your thoughts, appreciate your friendship. You've made me a better mayor. Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to item B, Council Proclamation, Gun Violence Awareness Month. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Would Betty and her family and guests please come to the podium? I'll read the proclamation and then bring it to you, and then you can have some moments to speak about Ezra and what you've been doing for him. All right. Proclamation, National Gun Violence Awareness Month. Whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Month is to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas in September of 2021, Ezra Nehemiah Taylor was tragically shot and killed, leaving his family and friends in Federal Way and South King County in grief. And whereas to help Ezra and Americans whose lives are cut short, the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, as well as the family and friends who have lost their loved ones, as a city, we join the National Coalition of Organizations that have designated June as National Gun Violence Awareness Month. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and to encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our residents safe. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and we encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Thank you guys so much, and thank you to my family and the partner, the Alliance for Gun Responsibility is here as well. And just wanted to say that it's been a long journey for our family and the community that was tragically affected September 26th and recently going through a trial for six weeks, and the outcome being the suspect found guilty of all 10 counts. And so after we heard that, for myself, my family, it was a sense of a different feeling, if that makes sense. And so just wanted to thank the City of Federal Way for their proclamation for this Gun Violence Awareness Month, and we, with Ezra's Hands Outreach, have been really doing a great work in the community, and Ezra has a park now in DeMons, Washington, and we are actually doing a lot of work in the schools and letting people know to keep it easy. Ezra had a, his name was Ezra, everyone called him Easy, and he wanted everybody to know to keep it easy, and so he created this merch. It's called Keep It Easy. And going into schools and going to workshops and going to, in the communities and talking about how to keep it easy when you go to work, how to keep it easy when you go to school, how to keep it easy when you go walking down the street and someone talks about you behind your back and you have to keep it easy. And so that is what Ezra was all about. He was a man, just a young man with a great heart, and so we are doing work in the schools and out in the communities and just more so now. But I just wanted to let everyone know what we're doing in the community to change lives as far as starting out young, identifying the characteristics that they have before they even actually reach middle school. We start with the young ones and identifying their characteristics even before they even think about touching a gun, even thinking about touching something bad. And so we're just going to keep it easy and continuing to keep it easy for Ezra's legacy. And I want to thank my family for their continued support and our community for the continued support as well. So once again, thank you so, so much, Jim Farrell. Thank you so much for the City of Federal Way, for your support. I thank the Federal Way Police Department as well. They have been much of a support to our family, and so we appreciate that so much. So with that being said, we want everyone in here to keep it easy because my son Ezra Nehemiah Taylor would tell you that every single day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something? Do you want to say something? You want to say something? It's okay. It's okay. Say something.
My name is Alex. I work with the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, where we try to save lives through gun violence prevention. Sometimes that looks like balancing rights and responsibilities. I've had the pleasure of knowing the Taylor family for just about, actually just about a year now. I actually met Ms. Betty over email, one of the very first emails I received working at the Alliance. And last year during Where Orange, I finally got to meet her in person on accident, but this family has shown strength through all the tribulations that life has put them through. It's really hard to lose anybody, but especially losing your son, your grandson, is a lot. And far too many people die at the hands of guns every year, especially young black men, and we need to do a lot more work to prevent that and make sure that people are safe in our communities. So yeah, thank you so much for this proclamation, and thank you so much for the Taylor family for inviting me here today.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you. I have to, you know, there's been key people in the city that have been speaking into my life and really encouraging me, and, okay, I'm gonna call somebody out. Okay, Jim, you know, I gotta call you out. I gotta call Jim. All right, thank God for Jim, thank God for the mayor's office, thank God for Susan Honda, thank God for the city council, thank God for the peeps, the community, you know? We're in this thing together. We work together, you know? We do it together, and so that's what it takes, all of us together, working together.
Thanks, Betty.
Thank you.
Next, we've got the Council Committee and Regional Committee's report. We've got Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, very short report. I would just like to, one of the commissions that reports to our committee is the Arts Committee, and I would like to commend them on the fantastic job they did at the Arts Explosion. A great, great event, something that we've been talking about bringing the community together. It's something that helps bring the community together. It was well done, a tremendous amount of work, and I want to thank them. Other than that, our next Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee meeting will be a week from tonight, June 11th at 5:00 right here. Love to see some of you there.
All right, great, thank you. All right, Land District Transportation Committee, LUTC, Councilmember Dovi.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Farrell. I'd just like to report that our next meeting is going to be on July 1st. But last night at our meeting, we had a couple interesting things that came up that I think everybody should hear about. We, the owners of the mall, came forward and asked to start a development process, a development agreement process, which is good news for redevelopment in our downtown, and that passed out a committee to come to council here in two weeks. And a follow-up comment on Anna Patrick's comment at public hearing that we did have a briefing on the upcoming comp plan that talks about housing needs, and there was some discussion about that and some of the same topics that Anna brought up in her- some discussion about that and some of the same topics that Anna brought up in her public discussion were discussed. So watch over the next few months whilst we have more information coming out about the needs of housing and the different options that we'll be looking forward in Federal Way to complete. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Paul McDaniel will give the report as he chair the meeting on my behalf.
Thank you. FedRAC met on May 28th. We had six council members who were present and heard all the presentations. Six of the items on the Consent Agenda, items B through G, were forwarded from that meeting. We do have one item on the business agenda to discuss the Arts and Special Events Assistant, and we also have the first reading of an ordinance on a limited tax and general obligations for the upcoming build-out maintenance facility. The next FedRAC meeting will be on June 25th at 5:00 PM in Council Chambers.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Tran. Okay, next we've got the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC, Councilmember Sephardosin.
Thank you, Mayor. There will be two different tourism grants on the Consent Agenda Day that were forwarded from FedRAC. The Pacific Raceways, which is the NHRA Nationals event in July, and then Elite Production Sasquatch Pro Bodybuilding Event in September. And applications for Tourism Enhancement Grant or TEG are still open to individuals or organizations involved in business or event planning, so we highly encourage people to apply. If you know of an organization or a group, please apply. The only caveat here is that this, whatever the event is, puts heads in beds here in our community. And so we highly encourage that people apply anytime during the process. Our next meeting is this coming Tuesday at 2:00 PM. Beazum, thank you so much.
All right, Regional Committees Report, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Last Wednesday, Valley Cities had a community coffee chat right next door, and there were several police officers, including our chief reserve fire department people were there and some local citizens. And Valley Cities talked about what they're doing with the fentanyl crisis in King County. I learned a lot, and both Councilmember Sephardosin and Councilmember Walsh were there, and we invited Valley Cities to come to an upcoming Parks Committee meeting to discuss what they're doing and how we can help as a city. Because there are, you know, they certainly talked about having some beds available, but also the need to have more beds available for treatment. And so hopefully that we can have them come sometime soon. I attended an APAMO General Membership Meeting, which is the Asian Pacific Islander Elected Officials Meeting for National League of Cities. And we had a great discussion about what, how AANHP, I meant, was celebrated throughout the country from the federal government on down to the local cities, and I got a lot of great ideas for next year. The Senior Commission is holding their month, their, so every three months they are now holding their Senior Commission Connection Meeting. It's going to be June 5th at the Community Center, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and a light lunch is served. This month, the special guest is Senator Claire Wilson, so all seniors are invited. And we usually have a full room, you know, 40 to 60 seniors who come in and have lunch and listen to our speakers, so that's awesome. Another exciting thing that is happening with the seniors is when the Parks Department talked about the Federal Way Community Center as our senior center, we talked about the lunches that are currently being served, the Hispanic community and the Korean community, and Still Like Presbyterian Church has stepped up once again to support the seniors in our community. And they will be offering a lunch once a month to seniors. It'll be sandwiches and salads, and it'll be on a Wednesday, I'm not sure which Wednesday, starting in June, and going through, they're committed through the end of the year until December. So I just want to point out that Still Like Presbyterian Church has been a great sponsor and supporter of our seniors here in Federal Way. They've given financial donations and just their overwhelming support of our seniors, which I really appreciate. I also had the chance to attend a meeting down in Auburn. It's a Cities and Schools Forum meeting. This meeting's been going on for 30 years, and they had, I'll tell you who they had there because I would love to see it happen here in Federal Way. They had the City of Algonah, City of Auburn, City of Pacific, Auburn School District, Green River College, and the Muckleshoot Tribal Council. And so Algonah, Auburn, and Pacific, their students all go to Auburn School District, that's why they were there. The Chamber of Commerce was also there down in Auburn. And for about two hours, they shared what each group is doing and how they can support the students from grade school all the way up to Green River Community College. And I just thought it was such a great networking chance that I would love to see something like that happen in our community. And so maybe we can do that here. It happens, I believe it's quarterly, so it's not every month, and it rotates through the locations, so it's not always at, this was at Auburn City Hall, but it rotates through the different cities and at Green River Community College. So anyway, I thought it was very interesting, and I thank them for inviting me so I can see, see how it was and see if we can do it here.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council President, Coach Mark.
Well, Mayor, at the last meeting, you tasked me to talk to Lake Haven Water and Sewer about the painting the tank over by the mall, which I did, and that painting the tank doesn't cost 100, doesn't cost 200, 300, 400, 800,000. But fortunately, it's been painted, so we're, we're good. You don't have to do the undercoat and the painting. But, so they're going to look into putting the digital printing on it, which welcomed the Federal Way. And so John Bowman, the Director of Engineering, is going to get back to you on that. So that's a good thing. I had to mention that Taquilla has on their water tanks, they have a Sasquatch on each of their little tanks, Sasquatch. So, but I want to just talk about something personal, which I have a granddaughter with terrible palsy. And in Seattle, the Seattle Public Schools has a really good program for children with disabilities. And so if you picture a room, my grandchild is now 21, and they graduate from a program called the Bridges Program. And so all of these children who've gone through elementary and high school, and then from high school, go on this and then called the Bridges Program, which teaches them how to do finance and make change and do volunteer work. So we're in, we're in downtown Seattle, in an industrial area, Seattle main building for the public schools. And we're talking about all of the children, if you picture the children in wheelchairs, some of them don't speak because they have autism, so a lot of them can't control their involuntary movements. And so we get through quite a number of kids, and by the way, one of them apparently was doing work in Federal Way and volunteer work at Cafe Dante and St. Luke's Lutheran Church, which I thought was interesting. Somehow they were networking out here, which thank you to Cafe Dante and St. Luke's. So my granddaughter goes up to, when it's her turn, goes up to the podium. Now she can walk, it's very difficult for her to walk, she has to have somebody help her. And gets up to the podium, and they're, they have a teacher talking about all the wonderful things the kids are involved in, so when my granddaughter gets up there, she takes right after me. She just takes the microphone right from the, from the teacher and then talks about all the wonderful things she's done. So this was really interesting for me to see my granddaughter develop that way. And so, you know, it's, some of our children, when they graduate from school, you know, we're always so proud of when they're doing well, but you know, some kids, if they just graduate, they've done well. So, so this is a time when our kids are graduating, and so just, you know, be sure to encourage your children to move forward in their lives, no matter what their life will be. And by the way, Mayor, I was so happy to come back here because along 15th Avenue South in the industrial area, they have a lot of RVs that are parked where people are living. They have a lot of graffiti. They have a lot of, it was dirty. I mean, I was so glad to come back here where it's clean and bright and fresh, and no wonder people want to come here and live in our woods. It's a nice place to be. So anyway, thank you to all of our police and our maintenance folks and our volunteers who are helping keep Federal Way a beautiful place to be. Thank you.
I was going to think of perhaps a, Tanya can work that into Economic Development, but I'll put the jokes aside. Okay. All right. Now we are on, thank you, everybody, we're now on to the Consent Agenda. These items have gone through committee, it can be passed all at once. I'll read each of them and then ask to see if there's an item that a council member would want pulled for separate consideration. Okay, Item 8A, minutes for the May 21, 2024, regular and special meeting minutes. B, monthly financial report, August 2024. C, AP vouchers, 417 through 516, 2024, and payroll vouchers, April 2024. D, purchase of replacement copies through Copiers Northwest. E, 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG Program Grant Award Acceptance Memorandum Understanding, MOU. Tourism Enhancement Grant is F, 2024. And G, Port of Seattle Economic Development Partnership Agreement. Council, are there any items you would want pulled for separate consideration? Councilmember Honda?
Item F, Tourism Enhancement Grant Recommendations, 2024. And I'd like to apologize to Tanya because I didn't tell her how to pull it. I'm sorry.
Okay, oh, that's fine. Council, any other items? All right, Council President, Coach Mark.
Thank you. I move approval of Consent Agenda Items A through E and then Item G.
All right, there's been a motion to approve Items A through E and Item G. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passing unanimously. All right, Item F. Councilmember?
Thank you. So the reason I wanted to pull this, I still had some questions after reading the applications on the Tourism Enhancement Grants, but I also want to, wanted to draw attention to this so that other organizations in Federal Way, like the Island Bowl, some of those things, will hear about this once again and maybe apply. I understand we have plenty of money in the account for this, and you know, it used to be that, like the Desna Cup used to apply, and then at one point they were told they couldn't apply anymore because they had already gotten money a couple times. So I'd like, if they're listening, and if they're not, I'll let them know, to apply again since we are, you know, letting groups apply and get money multiple times if they qualify, which I, I agree with. When we chose to, to support new activities and new events coming into town, we, and to put money towards those new events, I understood that, and I also understand why we're supporting the ones that are coming back. So I understand that, don't have a problem with it. But I just want to draw attention to the fact that we have this funding available because we want those events coming into town that need some, some help, financial help, that we have funding available for them. So my question for tonight for, is on the Pacific Raceway track, and I know we talked about other cities are supporting this event, and in the grant it says that we applied for and received $20,000 from the City of Kent. Is the City of Auburn not supporting this this year with LTAC?
I believe what they were referring to was last year, but Auburn, as far as I know, is also participating in the event through sponsorship. They were a major sponsor last year.
So, okay, so I read that this, that this is what they're applying for this year. Okay, so if the City of Kent, so we're awarding them 50,000, do we get more marketing opportunities in the City of Kent, which is awarding them 20,000?
Yes, that's correct. So there are packages, so essentially based on how much is provided in the sponsorship amount, there is a corollary to how much visibility we receive. So proportionally, last year, we did receive much more than what Kent did because they were also sponsoring at a lower level, and it will be the same this year.
Okay. I would also like to ask, you know, that when this is over, if we can get, try to get a more accurate account of how many heads in beds, if at all possible.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's a big, can you talk a little bit about, you know, the impact that this raceway has in South King County and their developing plans, actually to the point that you can? They've got some other things in the works we don't necessarily need to get into at this stage, but just kind of briefly touch on why this is important?
Sure. So it's important, the raceway in economic terms is an incredible economic driver for South King County. The event that they have, the national event that they have every year, which is the sponsorship pertains to the National Hot Rod Association Northwest Nationals, bring, last year it brought in just below 30,000 spectators, and there's a breakdown in the application. I'm sorry, I don't know it off the top of my head, but there was a large majority that were from out of town and out of the country. So first off, there's the exposure, you know, from out of town, out of the country. Second off, there's the economic driver of how much, you know, revenue they're bringing in for the hotels, and then of course for eating out and going to the, you know, the sights and the scenes. The three cities combined unfortunately don't have enough hotel rooms, so this is a really huge opportunity for Federal Way to showcase Federal Way due to the fact that folks have to stay here in order to be close to the raceway. And the last thing is that we've also developed an incredible relationship with the raceway leadership, and so they also helped us to create an event called Dragon Drive, which also kind of continues the festivities before, or I should say, it starts off the festivities before the race, where there's an event that comes around to all three of the cities, and so people can participate in that event as well. It's like a car parade. So it's a huge economic driver for the South King County. The last thing with your, you know, what kind of plans they have, they, do you have the Pacific Innovation Center, which they're finalizing, so that's going to bring in a lot of events, manufacturing and other programs. Also, it's attracting a lot of attention nationally with organizations that want to co-locate there. So that again is a huge driver for us, not only for the economy, but also for talent and workforce.
Great. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I move approval of the Tourism Enhancement Grant Recommendations for 2024.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A matter passing unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for the questions, Councilmember. And thank you, Tanya, for that. And keep us, you know, keep us in the loop as things develop, and I mean, I think there is, you know, there's some big news potentially brewing about what they're up to, and as Forrest would say, that's all I have to say about that. But when, when there's news to report, we will definitely let it be known. So, okay. Council Business, Item 9, Arts and Special Events Assistant, Full-Time Position. Will have a presentation with Kevin Hutchinson, Recreation Manager. Kevin?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Farrell, and City Council. You should have a policy question in front of you, which reads, "Should the City Council approve converting the Arts and Special Events Assistant position from part-time to full-time? If approved, this new full-time position would primarily focus on supporting commission events, such as the Arts Explosion, which you've heard so much about tonight, the Community Festival put on by the Diversity Commission, MLK Day put on by the Diversity Commission, the Senior Fair put on by the Senior Commission, and other events, if any commissions would like to put on events." The position will also support our city-sponsored special events in the Parks and Recreation Department. Those events are the tree lighting, holiday brunch, movies in the park, music in the park, and many others, which you'd all know about. I presented this at FedRAC last week, and I think there was a little bit of confusion with the numbers, so I'd like to clarify those tonight for you. Currently, we've spent roughly about $23,000 per year on this part-time position, that is the salary. If we move that to a full-time, that would change into $103,000 salary and benefits, so that 23 would go up to 103, so an additional $80,000 per year for that full-time position. We currently have a part-time special event and events assistant that we would plan to promote into this full-time position. She has spent countless hours on the Arts Explosion and made that event, helped to make that event a huge success, and she's also spent a lot of time make that event a huge success, and she's also spent a lot of time on the Diversity Commission, helping with their community festival currently happening in August. So, she would be spending her time on commission events and other special events as seen. And with that, I'd like to answer any questions you have.
And who is she?
Abby Wenick, sorry.
Right. Abby what?
Wenick.
Okay. Great. Councilmember Dovi, did you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a question. And my question is mostly for you more than this position. You know, coming into the budget, and this is not a full-time budgeted position in our current budget, you, I would think you're going to have to look at this in the next budget, and is it going to be a budgeted position? So, it seems to me that we might want to make it a six-month position until you come out with your new budget to make sure that it's actually in the budget, and we're not burdening you and the staff with a new budget to everything that hadn't been planned for.
Yeah. Let me kick this over to Brian Davis and see, get his, let's get his input about this, Councilmember.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Dovi, for the question. So, every quarter, Director Groom has made the habit of coming to the council for budget amendments. This position is needed now, and so we will incorporate this into the next budget amendment that you will consider. It will also, to Councilmember Dovi's point, will be part of the, you know, once it's amended into the quarterly budget, will be considered into the, along with all the other positions, into the 25, 26 budget moving forward.
So, let's take Councilmember's question, though, and let's take a look. I mean, obviously, you know, we may have some challenges. We may have some revenue shortages. We may have some other issues. I think, Councilmember, let me know if we're on the right track here, but if we ran into some issues with regard to budget and funding as we're moving into the new budget, would this be something that would be up on the block, or would we, you know, or do you feel safe at this point?
I wouldn't single this, what we're talking about tonight, I wouldn't single this out as the top priority for the first thing to go. I wouldn't say that at all. We would look at the entire budget and try to find ways. This is an important position. As Allison was up here before, she said that she was the only member of the commission that was working on one of the events that we try to put on. This position will make that happen, along with some of the other events that the commissions are, and the council for that matter, are wanting to do that we simply just don't have the staff to do right now.
Very good. I want to just engage the question for, because we are going, we are currently in a budget year. Councilmember, any questions on that? Or any follow-up questions on that? Councilmember Dovi, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just one follow-up question. I'm not opposed to this position. I think it's very well needed to have somebody that focus, has more focus and more time put towards events that we do. I was just more concerned about the budget, budgeting for it and what it, position it puts the next budget in, but if you and the staff are okay with it, then I have no issue.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. We've got Councilmember Honda and then Councilmember McDaniel.
Thank you. As a part-time employee, does this staff member have any benefits?
No.
So, we don't offer any benefits to part-time?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I think there's a threshold, I think you have to get, Ryan?
Part-time employees are offered prorata health insurance. It's more expensive. Often, people that are working part-time spend a significant portion of their salary to pay for health insurance, but yes, benefits are prorated by hours worked.
So, at $23,000, she's probably not getting any of those benefits?
I don't, I don't know anything about this particular employee, so...
All right. I was just checking because it's quite a jump from 23 to 103. So, my next statement is just, I have wanted for a number of years to have a full-time person in this position. I feel that with the events that are done in the City of Federal Way and with the commissions doing the events that they do, that someone who is in this position will hopefully have the contacts and the relationships with the folks who rent tables and chairs and that kind of stuff and tents, so that maybe we can get a good deal on things instead of having each staff member who oversees commissions trying to do that kind of stuff and make those contracts up.
Yeah. The idea is to kind of consolidate that into one person instead of every commission having that staff liaison. And this person is also working directly under Cassie Swan, who's been our Special Events and Arts Coordinator for the past, I think, eight years, and so she has currently all those contacts from all of our current special events that she's imparting to Abby right now.
So, I support this. So, thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you. Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah. Most of my, I'm going to request to put this on the business agenda. Most of my questions are based around the salary and some questions on that one, too. Like I said, the 23 to 103K is massive in my amount, and I do not understand that. Where did we come up with the 80K base pay before the benefits? Like, where was that number assigned that a Special Events Assistant is an $80,000 position? Where did that number come from?
That is currently under our salary table as the starting position, the A position, under our Parks and Recreation Coordinator salary. So, the $80,000 would be her starting salary, and then there's a 28% benefits to each full-time position, so 28% added to 80,000 is 103,000.
All right. So, that's, I guess, one of the questions I have is, I work with a lot of small businesses, and the numbers that we spend sometimes just blow my mind, to be honest. And I don't understand, like, if a small business were looked at this, they would say, get two part-timers, and it's 46 under 50K. So, I, I just look at this and just get really shocked, to be honest, on some of that stuff of the cost and some of these things. I'm just curious, does, I've been going to the Community Center quite a bit, and I know we talked about lifeguard pay. I've heard front desk people talk about pay. I've talked, I've heard a lot of people talk about paying stuff. Is there going to be, this is more to Mayor, is there going to be a conversation on salaries and the changes coming up? Is that going to be more of the, in the budget when we come up to it? Because...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you know, you've got the non-represented, you've got the represented, and, you know, it's, you know, whether it's negotiations, we're in negotiation right now with the Guild, the Police Guild. Those conversations are ongoing. We'll be also looking at the usual cost of living increases for the non-represented employees. So, yeah, that's, that's when a lot of this work is going to be done during the course this year.
Okay.
And we do a market analysis. We had gone, you know, just a little bit of history. Before I became mayor, we had gone six years in this city without a COLA, and that really put us in a situation, a disadvantaged position, that 10 years ago, we got, we started to get back on track. Then, I'd say, a few years ago, I don't remember the exact year, where we did the, I think it was 2019, where we did the comprehensive market analysis of where we were at, and we've been working to get ourselves more oriented and competitive with our neighbors in the region. Part of what's a challenge for the city is our tax base is at a much disadvantaged position to, like Kent and Renton, who have twice the tax basis that we do. And we're, we have an operating budget and a biennial budget, about 347, 350 million dollars just on operating for the biennium, and Kent and Renton have twice that. And so, they, you know, that's where a lot of these cities, you're talking about our salaries, a lot of these cities banned their directors, and their salary ranges are far in, I mean, the directors, and I don't want to get this too far out to our directors, but the directors in other cities make sometimes 20, $30,000 more than ours. And so, we've got to remain competitive in the, in the economy. Otherwise, we'll just lose all our good people.
Oh, I totally understand that, but like I said, I still think from an outside point of view on that side of the seat, and it is the most secured position in my mind. You're guaranteed to pay, you're guaranteed your benefits. If we shut down, you still get your pay. I know guys who slam hammers, put up glass, do a lot of crazy, hard work for a living who don't make close to this much. So, it really is a twist me, and they're the ones who pay the bills for this. So, I do take some issue with that and some of these numbers. I understand that's the business, but again, I look at these and I'm looking at the position, what they're going to be doing, and the guys that I've seen work, and the people, and the ladies I've seen work out there, and it is, it's different. And the AMI, since we talk about AMI a lot for stuff, this person is in the top percentage. So, right off the bat, they walk in, and they are the top percentage for what is the AMI in this location. So, yeah, comment on that?
Yeah. Are you finished?
Oh, no. The last thing is, is the front desk for the community staff and the guards are two things that if we're going to, you know, I'd like to have those guys verified and looked at for their pay, because McDonald's is paying more than some of the people I know are working on. And I was at the Community Center, and I was talking to a front staff today, wasn't happy, and they listened to me. I wasn't rude, but they was not happy, and they have to put up that on a daily basis.
Yeah.
So, that's my, my only comments.
Well, actually, let me just say, your perspective is valued. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Well, like I said, I work with hard slammers, man. These guys broke their butts off, and it's in construction mostly, and it's not an easy job.
Well, I talked about that, you know, I've moved furniture, done landscaping. Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. And I, you know, your perspective and your role in the council as a citizen in this community, absolutely essential. So, thank you. Brian?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Back to Councilmember Honda's question, the person right now is a temporary and has no benefits, and that's probably the reason for the jump from 23 to 100, why that's so great. The Councilmember Daniel, your comment about hiring two part-timers? We've struggled with a part-time market and attracting employees who are, who will stay and also who are productive when it comes to part-time work, and so we don't want to double that frustration by hiring two temporary employees. And then finally, to the mayor's point, each of the non-represented positions of which this one is a part are regularly weighed against the, against the market to make sure that the wages are in line with where it should be. So, it's not something that we would ever want to overpay. We're very careful about wages. We want to make sure that our employees are compensated appropriately. But I can tell you that when we do the salary survey, the last couple that we've done, there's, let's say, there's, I think there's about, my number's going to be wrong, I'm just going to throw this number out there just for discussion purpose, 50 positions that are, that are non-represented. It's not 50 employees, but 50 positions, because there's multiple employees within a position. There's maybe three or four that are, when they, that come in over market. Most of them are above low market, and we have to then adjust up. So, most of the ones that we will propose to you are very carefully calculated before we just start throwing money around. So...
All right. I guess my last comment is, Abby, congratulations on the raise.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much for your comments and for the thoughtful discussion. Kevin, anything else?
I'd just like to add that the position would bring a great deal of professionalism and experience as well. Full-time people that we hire, they generally have bachelor's degrees in recreation, leisure services, so compared to a part-time worker, like Brian said, this person's going to come in with a ton of experience, professionalism, and add a lot to our department, so...
Very good. Thank you very much. Kevin, how many years you been in with the city?
Fifteen.
Wow. What was your first position in the city?
Inclusion Coordinator. So, I spent 14 years as the Inclusion Coordinator, so...
Yeah. Very good.
You did a great job.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions on this? All right. Councilman Walsh?
Yeah. Before making the motion, I would just first like to make a brief comment. I work very closely with many event planners, and I truly appreciate the job that event planners do, and I think that it'll be bringing a lot of professionalism and some cost savings also to the, to the city as well. And so, with that said, I move approval of the position change.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter passing unanimously. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thanks, Mayor.
And thanks for the work you do. All right. Item 10, ordinances, first reading. Item A, Councilville 879, ordinance, limited tax, general obligation bond. First, we'll have a staff report from E.J. Walsh, Public Works Director, and then we'll go into Steve Groom, Finance Director. And with that, I want, I ask, Counsel, we were just going to have Steve come up here, but I wanted to make sure we had the proper context on, and let the public know what this is about, you know, where are we at in the process, and why are we doing this? So, E.J.?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers of the public. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. As the mayor mentioned, he asked that I come and kind of give a brief background of what we've been doing, and I'm happy to be here before council and share that. And I will tell you, I think a lot of this comes from a place that staff lives this every day, and we, you know, we've been working on this for years. And, you know, honestly, this is one of the projects, all of our projects are top of mind for me, but this is one of the projects that's very much top of mind for the people inside this building every day. So, I think we are obviously very familiar with it and probably take for granted a little bit just how much the community is, because this is one of those projects that we've been talking about for so many years that it is easy to gloss over when you're hearing about it in a meeting. So, with that, before I start, I do want to say, on behalf of the staff, thank you for getting to this project to this point. This has been a very long labor of love for many people in this building, and it has, it's been a long road. So, and we're, we're close to the finish line, but obviously, we're not there. So, we, I do want to say, you know, from the, from, from me, from my position, I'll speak for Director Hutton, wherever he want to, and say that, you know, for all of the maintenance staff across all the divisions and all the departments, as well as all the other staff that are going to be out there, you know, I do thank you for your support on this project. So, some background information, going way back in time, when we, as a city, first put staff in that building, we told the maintenance staff that they would be in that building no later than through 2000. Didn't quite hit that goal, but that's okay. In 2009, the council authorized a feasibility study for a new facility. We went through and presented some conceptual plans for that. Then, the economy downturned, and this project got shelved. 2016, council authorized us to do a project needs identification again. We went through that exercise, and then that resulted in 2018 and 2019, we spent doing a site needs review. So, we went out, we looked at two things. One, what would actually be needed for this facility, what are other cities our size have, and also, where could we put that? Fast forward a little bit more. In 2020, council authorized a subsequent detailed needs analysis and feasibility by an outside consultant to backcheck what was done in the 2016 through 2019. We brought in Helix Design to do that work, and their analysis largely resulted in the same findings that we had previously. May 2021, we came to council with some recommendations, and council tweaked them slightly, but it resulted in approval of site selection criteria to figure out where to put this. May 2022, we ended up coming back to council, and that criteria got updated. July of 2022, we selected the first preferred alternative, and then March of 2023, we selected a, and council approved, an updated preferred site. That's a site that's being advanced tonight. That's a site that we've acquired property for, and it is expanding the yard to the north. December 2023, council approved an interfund loan to purchase property to the north. As a little bit of a refresher, we purchased 13 parcels, 12 parcels, to the north of the existing facility, displacing a number of properties. We did provide relocation to those properties. The neighborhood has been very appreciative of the properties that we have cleaned up, and that interfund loan is due within three years of the time we pulled up. In April of 2024, we came before LUTC and subsequently the full council for authorization to bid the project. The project is actively on the street. We have contractors looking at it as we speak. Bids are due to the city June 25th. So, some site layout information. So, this is the overall site. If I hide the meeting controls, you could actually see the entire site. So, down on the south end, essentially, the driveway that you see, kind of where the cursor is, that's the existing north entrance to the property. We today operate on everything to the south of that. The small building you see in the southwest corner is the existing former fire station. The existing greenhouse is under the footprint of the new building, and the property to the north is what we have acquired and are consolidating other operations throughout throughout the city. As part of this project, early on, the mayor called me into his office and said, "Start value engineering this and figure out how to optimize this project and make sure we're not spending extra money." So, we went through that exercise with our architect. It resulted in this building to the north getting substantially smaller. This, the block that you're seeing here was originally double the size of this and took up this whole area. We have left that, so it could be a future phase to expand into that, but we cut that out. Parking on the south end may look a little interesting with this hard turn here. That's because this is designed for a future bay of parking to be able to pick up all of this parking here, put it for a second one. This will cover, the parking that you see on the screen will cover all of our current employees and the seasonals. It will not cover the full build-out that's envisioned within fifty years. Same thing with the large principal office building. As you can see, when we demolish this, we'll have some extra space here. This building is built to be expandable, to also be phased to allow for future growth when we build that future parking at some point in the, in the distant future. So, throughout the site, we did go through and value engineer it. We also reviewed a number of different proposals, everything from a police impound yard to bringing and consolidating the shopping cart area from Brook Lake to a number of other things that were, at one point, part of this project that are not today. So, all of those functions have been removed from the project to bring this, make sure we bring this in on budget. So, this is a rendering of the office building, locker building. And every time I see this on a screen, I think it looks really, really big, and I have to remind myself that this entire building is effectively half of the size of the upstairs of City Hall. So, it's a quarter of this building. So, while it looks big, this is not anywhere even close to the size of City Hall, let alone as big as it looks on paper. This is the actual view of the building. Effectively, you have the building broken into four areas. You have the locker rooms and the, and admin area in the center. Parks on the right, lunchrooms, break rooms, training rooms on the north, and then Public Works on the, what's actually, on the left-hand side of your screen. So, this is the actual maintenance and operations building. On the bottom left-hand side, you can see where this is allowed to be expandable in the future and go further to what is effectively the south. The eastern half of this, or northeast half of this, is all of the fleet maintenance operations that were, are being brought in-house as part of this. As you can see from the actual, in, in slightly more detailed rendering of the, or, sorry, plan of the inside of the building, this is a very bare-bones building. It's mostly a large secured space that we can secure equipment in. And that's really the, the goal of the western half of this. On the, on the other side of the screen, the fleet operation side, you can see again, it's, it's very minimalistic, open bay style, not a lot of accessory equipment. Things like high lifts, we did not include in here. What we have is, what you see is six movable jacklifts, so that can be moved around. That has equipments in there that needs to be worked on, as opposed to much more of an automotive garage where you'd see a lot more equipment, and that all got cut from this. So, budget-wise, this is the same budget that was presented as part of the interfund loan, which is the same budget that was presented when we selected the final site. So, this hasn't changed. It's, all these numbers are exactly the same. Where, but what has changed on the bottom that I can share with you is expended to, to date, design, we've spent about one point nine million dollars so far. That includes not only architectural fees, but includes permit fees and everything else that you have to do to actually get to a permit-ready project. Property acquisition, we are under budget, so we've spent about seven point eight million dollars. But we, we have expended those monies. So, all of that funding was against the interfund loan. So, part of what the bond ordinance that you're gonna hear from Director Groom in a minute about is reimbursing the interfund loan this funding. And that is a common way to build projects like this. And I, Councilmember McDaniel, I do want to touch on your fuel question real briefly in here. So, currently, we use, and you can see it called out specifically in here, and that includes two things, includes fuel as well as fleet services. Fueling itself is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build out our, the fuel system on this project. Currently, we have a contract with the school district, which provides the majority of the, of the fuel. So, there is no businesses in the city that we are going to be taking funding from. We're not using a third-party company.
That was more for the tires and the maintenance, though.
No problem.
Fuel was just a question.
And I'll get to that one in a second. So, so the fuel, the expectation is that where we are fueling from the school district, we will keep the inner local in place. That way, you know, in event of emergency, we still have that cross ability. They can fuel from us, we can fill from them. There's no change there. But the goal is to move all of the standard fueling operations to this facility from the school district. That being said, we also have actually with several local companies, emergency fuel cards that are used. One example that you heard, well, you didn't hear tonight, but from like Kevin Hutchinson with the inclusion trips, if they drive to Olympia or they drive to wherever and they have to get fuel, they're obviously not gonna get it here because the bus is sixty miles away. So, we do have the ability to use commercial fueling when we need to. So, none of that will change. None of that was considered in the, in the payback of this either. We only looked at what we are paying the school district and admin fees to cover this cost. As far as the rest of the fleet, we use a range of contracts, one of which is in the city. The majority of them are not. We are not a large customer from the one that is the city, is within the city. But, you know, ultimately, yes, we are looking to bring this in-house. There's a number of reasons why, and that's, that was the, in part, the direction of council. And part of it is savings in the long run, as well as our ability to do emergency repairs to vehicles when we need to do them, not wait for a company to open Monday morning. So, there, there's a number of factors. There is not a significant impact to taxes or companies in the city, though. Most of the, most of the volume of work that we are doing is done by companies outside city elements. There's also no FTE associated with, in your fueling comment, there was a question about FTE for fueling. There's, there's not an FTE for fueling.
But most of that was about the maintenance side of it, the guys who be working, the tires, the oils, the construction, all that.
Yeah. So, we, when we presented this to council originally, we did factor in, I can get you the number, I don't remember off the top of my head, a number of FTEs in the cost. That's included in all of this, and the cost savings were still there, that it, it made sense to advance this. So, so ultimately, yes, to change tires and stuff, there are FTEs included in the pricing. The other thing that I wanted to share, as we've, we've gotten a number of questions over the last five years that we've been working on this about how does this compare to some of the other projects. And, you know, I think in very simplistic terms, it's very easy to say, hey, when we executed this contract, it was that many dollars. You know, I think we can all attest to, from our personal lives and from signing invoices at the city, inflation's been a big deal in the last decade. So, if we were to, and this is from the federal government's B L I index, if we were to future cast from where they were originally built, so the PAC was, the contract from the PAC was twenty seventeen, and we were to put that in terms just from the state, just, and this is just CPI, you know, there's been other things, especially in the steel industry that has driven cost, that is way above CPI, but just to future cast it to the CPI values. The PAC contract for construction would be just under, or just over forty-one and a half million dollars today, in twenty twenty-four dollars. Community Center would be just under twenty-nine million dollars. If we were to try and rebuild Celebration Park, it would be almost sixty million dollars. So, those are three projects that I've heard this compared to a number of times, and that this is, you know, quote, "the biggest project in the city's history." There are certainly many different ways you can look at contracts, and you can certainly approach it with that argument. I also think that if we call it a level playing field, that may not be quite as easy of a comparison. I, I would say, I don't think, you know, if we had to go rebuild the Celebration Park today, I don't think we could do it much cheaper than that. So, I think when we're talking about projects, we do gotta be careful about comparing a project from twenty years ago to today. And, you know, in, in full transparency, I took out, there were, there's some really big projects. PAC Highway, we spent over a hundred and twenty million on. If you cast that today, it would be a hundred and eighty million dollar project. Kids Corner Regional Pond would be a sixty million dollar project. So, I mean, I took some of those big projects out, just for the sake of construction. And then, the last piece of this, you know, so two thousand, two thousand and nine were two decision points that the city had, and we're, we're moving ahead with this now. But in two thousand and nine, had this been built, that same forty-three million dollars that was, which is the base construction plus fleet and fuel plus the police building that's out there, would've cost the city thirty million dollars. So, it's a thirty-one point six percent increase in the last fourteen years, and that's just CPI. I would tell you, my gut instinct, I was building all over the world, literally, in two thousand and nine. I would tell you, I think that number's high. I think in two thousand and nine, you probably could've done it for several million dollars cheaper. Two thousand, had we backed it up to that number, it would've been twenty-four million. So, time is not our friend in this conversation. So, next steps, outside of the bonding ordinance. So, next steps as far as the process goes. June twenty-fifth is the bid opening that is public. It's in the Hyloboz Room at, it's on the city website. I want to say it's at ten a.m. If you have an interest in being there, you are more than welcome. July, we will, if all things go well, be in front of L U T C and council for award. We are planning August for groundbreaking out on-site would be the goal. And then, we get to work with construction, and the part that I, hopefully, all of us are looking forward to, I know I am, in early two thousand and twenty-six is a ribbon cutting. So, graphically scheduled, because I like seeing things visually. So, this is, and this is the same chart we shared with council a number of times. We keep moving the red line to the right as we tick off work. We are in June of two thousand and twenty-four, and you can see we are, we are in that advertise and award phase. All of the heavy lift for the project going to construction is complete at this point, and we are, we are very close to being off to the races of putting shovels in the ground. The last thing I want to add is, you know, and as I started with, staff is obviously very excited about this project. I do want to take a second and, and bring to council's attention, staff has done a ton of work out there to reduce the cost of this project. So, as I, I think most of the council's aware, city staff took care of the demolition of all of the houses on the north properties that we acquired. We took that out of the contract. The construction estimator that we've been using, flat out told us that's well over half a million dollars worth of savings to the city after our disposal costs. So, we, we've done that. The Parks Department relocated a ton of existing equipment and materials out of the existing maintenance yard that originally the plan was to have the contractor do. We would've had to pay them to do that. So, there's a huge amount of savings from the work that the Parks Department has done as well. I T Department's been involved with moving cameras and infrastructure to, again, save money on work that the contractor was originally supposed to do. So, staff has been being very aggressive on what we can do in-house to advance this conversation and, and frankly, to save money. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Director Groom to go over the bonding itself.
Thank you very much. The bond ordinance before you is actually a product of more than a few months. I think, actually, I took this as a handoff from a day before me. I've been working with E.J. since I started here almost three years ago. But separately from the public works side, the finance department started the, the debt process in earnest in, in January, in order to deliver a bond ordinance. There's actually a lot of planning and assembly of documents, facts, and figures, because investors have a right to receive, and we have a responsibility to disclose quite a bit of financial data. While we have a double A two credit rating, in order to actually offer to sell our debt on the bond market, we have to put together a credible fact, factually-supported collection of material that has a great deal of scrutiny. We came to FedRec last week, and I had with me our bond counsel and financial, our municipal advisor. They're joining me remotely tonight. They're available for questions at the end, but this will be a much shorter presentation. As, as E.J. pointed out, the bid opening will be on June twenty-fifth. We have a credit rating presentation scheduled in July, and then we expect to issue the, the public offering statement in, also in July, and then the bond funding would be in August. Debt capacity is a fairly straightforward thing. Every year, when we, when we put out our audited financials, we present a table, and really, all it, all it is, the formula is taking the complete assessed value of the entire city, multiplying it by one point five percent, subtracting our outstanding debt, and there is our non-voted capacity. So, council, council manic debt capacity is two hundred and thirty-two million. There is an additional voter-approved capacity on top of that, if we were to want to go to the voters. So, voting, so, so debt capacity certainly is, is, is not really quite what the, the legislature is, our budget is. Once a month at, at FedRec, I also bring this schedule that shows our current outstanding debt. And what I have highlighted here is that in two thousand and twenty-nine, the final payment for the Performing Arts Center will be made, and that has been using REIT as a funding source. Similarly, the community center, that debt ends in two thousand and thirty-three, and the SCORE debt ends in two thousand and thirty-eight. Each of those circled or outlined figures is debt that we're currently paying out of REIT revenue, which will then become available to be redeployed. And so, the schedule that our financial advisor, I thought this was a great graph. This shows over twenty-five years, the different funding sources, because gray bars at the bottom being surface, surface water, because they share in the usage of the facility, would have a fairly stable amount over the twenty-five years. REIT in the gold bars would increase as the other debt issues are repaid. And then, the remaining amount to be paid by the general fund would, would be on top of that. We do have some flexibility built in, so that if we need to, we could extend out to thirty years, and there's some, some flexibility built into the bond structure, and we've talked about that. One of the, one of the most important things that I think right now is that if we keep the SWIM fund, some fund balance available and use it to pay debt service, that gives us the opportunity, should REIT not come in as we hope, in the near future or in different economic cycles, that would give us the flexibility to, to be able to make sure that we can make the, the full debt payments with confidence. The schedule, we've, I've, I've shown different forms of this quite a few times. This just shows the, the amount that we anticipate paying out of surface water, so that its total is thirty percent of the total project. REIT would start out at a million dollars per year and increase as the other funding becomes available. We also have, are recognizing that part of the debt will be paid from savings, from fuel and maintenance in our current existing budget. And then, we're hoping to keep the general fund portion in the range of four hundred thousand, which is, which, which makes it fairly manageable for the general fund. At a policy level, I think we talked about this, one of the guidelines, these are the guidelines that you want, want to make sure that, that we're adhering to. We want to make sure that the debt repayment is less than, than the life of an asset. That's similar to wanting to make sure that you don't have a car loan after your car has already worn out. In this case, we have a very long-lived asset, and we're looking at issuing debt in the neighborhood of twenty-five to thirty years. We're also using debt to spread the cost across the useful life, and I will back up because Councilmember McDaniel had pointed out that the total project cost in the lower right-hand corner here is ninety-one point one million. Over the life of the loan, the interest and the principal would be spread over all of the debt payments. So, that means that we would be spreading the cost over those who receive the, the benefit, our taxpayers and our residents, who depend on this facility to provide the services that they get from police and parks and public works. We are within, within our legal, legal debt limit, and we've, and we've been very cognizant to make sure that we're making the, the debt payments fit within our future budgets. So, this is a bond ordinance. It's going to authorize staff to issue debt, authorize us to execute on it. As E.J. mentioned, this rolls in our ability to reimburse ourselves for the cost of the land acquisition that we've executed an interfund loan. We expect to, to end in August. The purpose in the, in the ordinance, as you saw, was specifically for the construction and equipping of the facility, and this pledges the city's entire resources to repay. This is council manic debt, and it puts on staff a burden to annually provide continuing disclosure. We will be publicizing our annual audited financials, for example, and that's in compliance with the S E C and S M R, M S R B agencies. And we can't do this without having an official offering statement, and that requires your, your approval passing this bond ordinance. With that, that concludes the presentation. I am joined by bond counsel and our municipal advisor, and E.J. and I are happy to open questions, or if there's any questions that come out of the hearing. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Tran, then Counselor McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Steve, for the information. The fifty-seven million dollars, are we factoring any potential cost overrun of the project?
What that is for is if we issue debt at a premium, we want to leave ourselves wiggle room, because when we sell debt, we're looking for fifty-two point five million. However, how much comes from principal, how comes from the interest rates, it's unlikely that we would sell it at a premium right now, but, but that's, that's the wiggle room we're leaving. It's, it's the fifty-two point five that we're after.
Okay. The other question I have is- The other question I have is, once we issued the bonds and if the interest in the future drops, can we refinance the bonds?
I believe there's a requirement that we can't for 10 years, but after that we could. Duncan Brown, if you're on, you could, you could follow that up if you like. Stephanie, do we have them on?
Yeah, good evening. This is Duncan Brown with PFM Financial Advisors. And Director Groom is correct, 10 years is the, is the standard call feature for tax-exempt bonds. Sometimes you see that at eight or nine years, but there is a, there is sort of a lockout period for the first few years of the life of the bonds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McDaniel.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, the financial meeting was actually pretty well on, good on understanding how the bonds work and the 57 versus the 52 we're looking for. Some of my questions are actually trying to get some backdated information. I hear numbers all the time and they keep changing, so I want to, I want to write them down. When the council first approved the joint operation maintenance in the budget, what was the original estimate for it at that point?
That was 42 million. That was before we anticipated the land acquisition and it was also two years ago. So as EJ mentioned, time is not our friend on the costs.
So it was 42 and then the 9 million puts us at the 51?
I'm sorry, it was 42 million and then we, we added 8 million for property acquisition. And then the extra 2 million would be for increased cost estimate.
Somebody said that was 30-some million, so it's always been at the 40, technically it's 44, 500? Or was it 30-some at one time?
So the, the 30 number is the base. So there was a slide in the presentation that had that broken out.
But that was never part of the, the budget?
So the budget, as Director Groom mentioned, the budget was 42. But this, so this base program plus the FFNE, there is a budget way back that shows the FF, or sorry, not FFNE, the professional costs advanced in an earlier year than the construction costs. So it's split over two bienniums. But the base number, and then when we presented this adding the fleet and fueling and police vehicle storage building, that's where the 42 number came from. So we have shown this both lined out as a 42 number in one number, which is what you're getting at. We've also shown it broken down more in line with this. So it's a very distinct, so council could see, you know, kind of the, the base construction replacing apples to apples today of what's out at the maintenance yard as well as the, what we're doing to bring long-term savings to the city, so the fleet, the fueling.
Gotcha. So as of right now, our goal is 51 and we, I guess you can't really, I mean, your best guess, what are you feeling that the bids will come back at?
The power of competitive pricing, we are hoping that we get the best price we can possibly get. I'm looking to keep the payments under 400,000.
Yeah, I, I, I think if I had a crystal ball to be able to tell you that, council member, I would be a very wealthy person.
I get that.
What I can tell you is right now the market is very competitive. There's a lot of interest in this project and we have seen a, a very high number of bidders that have expressed interest. That plays to our favor.
Gotcha.
So as far as, you know, all of these numbers we have as part of the design team, we have a cost estimator out of Seattle that all they do is commercial cost estimating. And then they see it through the project of what the actuals are versus this. So that, you know, they live and breathe this work. They're the ones that came up with these numbers. There are a couple of numbers that we have pushed back on, we think are slightly high in their cost estimates, just what we know from local construction running as many public works projects as we do. So I'm, I'm very optimistic that we will see bids that are maxed out at this value. We'll get some oddball bid that's super high because you always do. But, you know, I, I'm full well expecting that based on the climate right now and the feedback that we are getting from the number of interested bidders, as well as what our, our team is telling us that we, we have the numbers pretty close. That all said, the proof's in the pudding on June 25th when we open bids.
And the, the bid, the 51, we used the word 50, the 51 million dollar number. So the 51 or 52 million dollar number, is that taking consideration, you guys, is, I think it's 10%, you guys put aside for just in case factor or is that not?
It, it, well, yeah, so it's, it's actually built into, so it's not.
FedRec had a different breakout and it actually showed that as one of the items.
So it is included in the base program. It's included in the fleet services, included in the vehicle. It's not included in property. So I'm, I'm, the reason I'm a little hesitant to just say yes is if, you know, if you were to apply 10% across 51 million, your number would be higher than the number that you saw at FedRec because land acquisitions effectively completes, we're not carrying contingency on that.
Gotcha. So we have roughly about a $4 million, give or take?
Correct.
Okay. And then my, I guess my last question, actually two questions. I just want to verify, every million dollars we take out of the loan is about $70,000 per year of repayment, correct?
No, let's do that as well.
Based on current interest estimates, that's, that's about right.
So 50 million is 3.5 million a year.
Then that doesn't work. With simple amortization it does, but I think our debt schedule makes it a little bit more complicated.
Okay. I'm just trying to keep the mental notes.
Yeah, I'm trying to think in my, in my, yeah, I'm trying to do the math, think why, why that would be different.
Okay. And then the last question is, what happens if it does come back and it is over? Are we, I'd like to say in my email, I'm pretty set on not changing that number because I'm looking at a $91 million debt to my family who's going to stay here for most of their lives, so.
I'm going to say that's the worst case scenario and hopefully we're not there. But, you know, ultimately that we'd have to have some hard conversations. I, you know, this project is, is stripped down to its bare bones at this point. We would have to talk about what we're taking away from the facility, which would mean changing the level of service of what we're providing.
Okay.
That's a conversation I really don't want to go down that rabbit hole. And I'm, I'm very hopeful that we won't have to go down that. But we would have to talk about cutting things that's going to change the function of what council's previously directed us to do.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Councilor Doby, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have one question about the, the interfund transfer we did to buy the land. If, if we were to not bond that and pay ourselves back, how would that affect our budgets going forward or what would we be giving up? Because I look at that as we're kind of basically spending the money we got from Trent to transfer to the land. But is that, how does that affect us if we said, hey, let's just take that, we spent the money and not pay it back into our budget through the, the borrowing the money?
Thank you, council member. This is different from the, from the development project. This, this is an interfund loan that, that we borrowed from the transportation fund and it's a state statute. Well, I'm not sure if it's a state statute, but the state auditor holds us to a pretty strict guideline that we have to extinguish interfund loans within three years.
Okay, so we have to pay it back?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilor Walsh, council president, and then Councilor Honda.
Just one quick question. With the, with the fleet fueling and maintenance, how long do you project, I mean, the savings on that, how long do you project it would, how many years will it be before it yields a, a?
Savings?
Yeah.
You're testing my memory. We presented that probably a year ago at council, I believe, and I can get you the exact number, the fleet number was seven to eight years, or sorry, the fueling number was seven to eight years and the fleet number I believe was in the 13 to 14-year range. Both of them were substantially shorter than the, the length of the bond that we're talking about.
Okay. All right. That, that's, that's close enough. You don't need to, so, thank you.
Councilor President Kujm.
I would assume that if the bids come in too high, that you simply will not accept them and then go out to bid at a later date.
Correct. We would, we would have two options. One would be strip out components of the project or two would be to reject the bids and go back out of a later date. And that would be a, a conversation we would have to have. And as I, as said to council member McDaniel, I'm, based on the feedback we're hearing, I'm, I'm hoping we don't have to go there.
Thank you.
But yes, that's worst case scenario.
Councilor Honda.
Thank you. On the SWAT vehicle storage, do we own that vehicle or do, does SWAT own it and do the other cities that were, were involved in a SWAT, do they all pay into that, storing it?
As far as owning the vehicle, I'm going to look to the chief. I don't know the answer to that one.
We're part of a regional SWAT team called the Valley SWAT. So there's several vehicles that the Valley SWAT team has or choose. So as a city, we, vehicle has to be registered to a city. So we have one of the vehicles, a takedown van with ballistic capability. We have that registered to our city. But we have other two Bearcats that are registered to, to other cities, I believe, Renton and Kent. And so we take turns because we have to purchase insurance for the vehicle, so for our SWAT team use. So that's how we do it. And we're looking to put storage for our SWAT vehicle. Also, we want to have a small work area so when officers are waiting for their vehicle, when they're fueling, we want to encourage them to be onsite, partly for security reasons and also for them to do some work and check their email, do those kinds of things while they're waiting for their vehicle.
Well, my question is, since this SWAT vehicle is used by all these different cities, do they pay into this 480,000?
Not for the project. We have interlocal agreements that I'm really not sure I can speak to, but we have a, we have cooperative agreements with the overlapping agents, with, with the agencies that we worked with, but it doesn't involve this project necessarily.
No, they would not be paying into it. We're responsible for storing the vehicles ourselves. Every city just about has, has vehicles and they're responsible for storage of those vehicles themselves. So we would have to store our own Valley SWAT vehicles on our own. So this project would have nothing to do with other cities.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor McDaniel.
Yeah, I had one follow-up. On the fuel and maintenance savings, does that also take out the cost of the full-time employees?
Right. That's all factored into the years that I shared.
Thank you. What you're looking for.
All right. Stephanie, do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor, I don't have anyone signed up.
All right. Anything else for me too, gentlemen? All right, thank you very much for a very thoughtful and, and very thorough presentation. Brian, you have anything?
All right. All right, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 879, Ordinance Limited Tax General Obligation Bond, An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Relating to Contracting Indepens, Providing for the Issuance, Sale and Delivery of One or More Series of Not to Exceed 57 Million Aggregate Principal Amount of Limited Tax General Obligation Bonds, To Provide Funds to Pay or Reimburse the City for the Costs of Acquisition of Land, As the Site for the Construction, Remodeling and Equipment of a Joint Use Operations and Maintenance Facility for City Departments and Other Capital Purposes, and to Pay the Costs of Issuance of the Bonds, Fixing or Setting Parameters With Respect to Certain Terms and Covenants of the Bonds, Appointing the City's Designated Representative to Approve the Final Terms of the Sale of the Bonds and Providing for Other Related Matters.
All right. Councilor Tran, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move forward the proposed ordinance to the June 18, 2024 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
Second. It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
I have another question.
Uh, okay. Councilor Honda.
Thank you. On the interfund loan, where, where did, oh, there you are. On the interfund loan, as soon as, if this were to pass, would we pay ourselves off sooner than the three years so that we could save some interest on that and get that money back into the?
The entire principle of the debt issue is partially to pay back our interfund loan. So it would not reduce the principal.
But we would pay that back sooner than the three years?
We would give the money back to the fund that we borrowed it from out of the proceeds.
Sooner than the three years?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments, deliberation? Counsel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Matter passed unanimously. Great job, EJ. And thank you, Steve and Chase. EJ, let your folks know, help is on the way. We're, it's moving. All right. Now, we are moving on to council reports. We'll start at position number one at the first meeting of the month. Councilmember Sepa Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have nothing to report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor McDaniel.
Real quick, it is graduation season. I've already started going to mine. They are actually fun. It's interesting to see kids that you watch being born finally graduating. And I've had a couple who did not think they would make it and in the invitation cards, they actually thanked me for pushing them forward. So it's kind of funny. You don't realize how much of a difference you make until you actually, the time comes to pop up. And she took off, but I had a comment about the vice commission this week, but I guess I'll see her then. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Honda.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Arts Commission for Arts Explosion and the Quanis Clubs was one of the key sponsors of that. I was there last year and, and this year, I, as a ex-member of the Arts Commission, I know how much work went into that for the commissioners and for staff, and I really appreciate what they did and the hard work that they, they put into that. And, you know, when you have a dream of trying to do something and it comes true, it's, it's amazing. And so their dream and their passion for bringing something like this to Federal Way really did show this weekend and I appreciate that. I also want to talk about a few things that the Quanis Club is doing. I have just finished, I think, my 10th year as the advisor for the Key Club at Federal Way High School. And we had our last meeting for the year, well, for the, the summer on Thursday. And I have a really great group of Key Clubbers at Federal Way High School. They're very involved in the community as are, are other Key Clubs at Thomas Jefferson, Beamer and Decatur. And so when you see Key Clubbers out in the community volunteering, they'll be at the Salmon Bake, they are at the farmer's market, they're at any event that they can find out and go to and volunteer because one of their missions is to volunteer in the community. So, so thank them. And Ben should join Key Club at Decatur.
Yeah.
Yeah. He still has, what, one year left?
Yep.
He can join.
Okay.
They meet Monday nights.
Okay. Awesome. You bet. Thank you very much.
Also, we do something called the Terrific Kids Program where we go into four elementary schools here in Federal Way and we honor the children that the staff pick out for their values and for what they're doing at school. And we did our, we have one more left, but I've been going to Mirror Lake and Rainier View Elementary Schools. And the kids at Mirror Lake this week were very excited and very special and it's, it's been an honor to be involved in that. And of course, I can't not talk about the Salmon Bake. Tickets are live, they're on sale. You can buy your tickets now. I encourage you to buy early, let us know that you're coming so we can plan for it. And we will be having ice cream from council member Walsh and Sub-Zero once again, so please come. And once again, Flag Day, Seroptimus Club, June 15th, 9:30 to 10:30 at the Warhouser King County Aquatic Center in the banquet hall. We look forward to seeing everyone there and graduation is this weekend in Federal Way, so be safe. Congratulations to all the graduates and to the staff who got them through and to their parents and families.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilor Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much to, to report except I want to share with you some fun facts about the last country that I visited during my Euro trip. It was the Monaco, the second smallest country in the world with only 36,000 resident.
Wow.
Of which, half of their, of their resident are millionaire, half. So 18,000 out of 36. The average home there is 5.5 million dollars. Let's see. You can actually apply and live there. They call, they call Golden Visa. And the requirement is, is, is very straightforward. You have to commit to stay there more than three months. You have to deposit half million euro. You have to prove that you can support yourself without working while being in there. The, the country has zero crime rate, zero homeless, zero graffiti. And yeah, so if anybody want to move there, welcome to move there.
Sounds pretty boring, man.
It's beautiful country, by the way. Very, very beautiful.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Did you see any race cars? They had the big.
You know, the, they have the international supercar display.
You know, they have the international supercar display, takes place of June?
June 4th to June 9th, so after I left.
Exactly. We can still make it if we get, if we leave tonight. All right, thank you. Counselor Walsh.
Well, I just think we, just so people know, Councilmember O'Tran, I believe, is retiring later on this month, and I, I think he, I think he may have just slipped where he's going to go to, I don't know, but anyway. But, no. Just a couple of things. Earlier, the, the mayor mentioned that the tool library, that, that last Saturday, there was a drive-through recycling thing for, for appliances and stuff. I was there last Saturday also, but not to do any recycling, but to return a tool. And the, the tool library is a great resource for our community. Wonderful. Amanda and her crew do a great job there, and I would encourage people to, to, to use it, support it, whatever. I mean, it, it's a wonderful asset for the community. In addition, also, Councilmember Honda mentioned that the meeting at Valley Cities, they are, do great work, and I'm looking forward to when they will be talking to the, the Parks Committee. Lastly, Saturday before last, on the May 25th, there was coffee with council and school board at Starbucks, and it was a very, that there were, let's see, it was Councilmember Honda, McDaniel, what, Linda, were you there? No, 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 she, oh, she, she had the nerve to be in Hawaii, I think.
And all of the school board members were there.
Yeah, and, and all the school board members were there. But, but a very good conversation with the community. I mean, just, just informal conversations, and I think it's things like that that can help build relationships within the community and, and hear different points of view, and, anyway, so it was, it was very worthwhile. And there, there will be others in the future, and I would encourage people to, to attend. And that is, and also, congratulations to the grads. I have several grads that I employ at my business that are, are moving on. So anyway, all right, that's it.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Mordoby.
Yes, the only report I have is today is two weeks since I got my new knee, and I hopefully soon I'll be up and around and seeing you all in person, starting to get better.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Best wishes. All right, Counsel President.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, just warn you that next meeting, we'll be going to Vancouver, and so some will already be down there, some will be leaving after the meeting, so if you keep it as short as possible, it would be helpful, because it gets pretty dark driving down there.
Okay, I'm on it.
Thanks.
All right, with that, counsel, great job. Oh, that's the, Counselmember Sepa Dawson.
I just wanted to, to share something. Last weekend, I was supposed to be in Austin, Texas, and I booked my ticket for the wrong date, for the wrong month, correct date. So my son had pity on me, and I had, and he was staying at Sun River Resort in Bend, so he felt sorry for me, I think, and I joined them there, and it's a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful place, so.
It is. It is fun.
But I still get to go to Austin, because I can't waste my ticket.
That's very good, very good. All right, I want to thank the staff, great job, great presentations, thank you, thank everybody who commented tonight, and to, to those in the audience. Thanks, everybody on the council, great job. And with that, we are adjourned. All right.